Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. This is a school board workshop and the time is 1:00 PM. Sergeant of Arms has the lobby been cleared.
Yeah.
Thank you. There are seven items on the agenda today. RSM update, school board attorney and general counsel contract, district advisory committee topics, safety update, Fort Myers Beach Elementary School conversation, public comment, good of the order, and other business. Per board protocol, each board member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two minutes for follow-up, with a total of 10 minutes during the discussion today. We will begin with an update with RSM. Matthew Blondell, RSM Director, and Weiss Campbell will be presenting this afternoon.
Good afternoon, board members. Matt Blondell with RSM Internal Audit Director here. I just wanted to give you a brief update and review the results of one of the reports that was completed recently. So just as a refresher, the audit plan for fiscal year 2025 is shown here on the screen. We had five individual items here. Two of those were brought to the board at the June 3 meeting where we talked about capital planning and facilities maintenance, and then incident response tabletop exercise. We discussed that earlier today in executive session. And then we did want to provide the results of the final version of the report for ESE services, and then also the results of our ongoing follow-up testing. So as we mentioned earlier, we went through this in executive session due to security reasons, so that project is now complete and we discussed those results with the board earlier today. I will go ahead and turn it over to Weiss to walk through the two observations that we had related to our internal audit of the ESE services.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your time today. I'm going to just briefly try to give you an understanding of what the objective was of this project before briefly talking through the two observations that you see noted here on the screen. The primary objective of this project was to assess the district's ESE program focusing specifically on regulatory compliance as well as the IEP development and implementation process. We evaluated the timeliness, the accuracy of IEP documentation, and the alignment of these services with the federal and state mandates that exist. And as part of our procedures, we assessed the review and approval process, verified compliance with the required timelines for the IEP development, as well as the reevaluations that are expected to take place. We reviewed the training programs that exist and are ultimately provided to the educators, the administrative, as well as the support staff that exist at the schools. And we performed detailed testing across 40 IEPs to assess service and accommodation delivery for those sampled IEPs. We did identify two high-risk observations, which I'll briefly walk us through here shortly. The first observation is around the development and delivery of the services or accommodations. As part of our review, we noted that management was unable to provide documentation to support some of the key actions that are expected during the development and delivery of a sample of student IEPs. So we sampled, as I stated before, 40 IEPs, and we identified three primary exception types. The first being evidence of parental participation. So for one of the 40, there was no documented evidence of parental participation in the IEP meetings, nor confirmation that the parent had declined participation, which is required by Florida Administrative Code. The second being delivery of services and accommodations. So we tested across those 40 IEPs over 400 services and accommodations within those IEPs. Our testing revealed that documentation was not available to substantiate the delivery of approximately 76% of that total sample. And while we, I just want to highlight, while we recognize that many of these accommodations may be difficult to document, many of these accommodations may require verbal encouragement, for example, right? There are still federal and state requirements that expect these actions to be documented, so we highlight that here. The third and final piece of this observation is around student progress reporting. So 11 of the 36 IEPs where we would have expected progress reporting, 31% did not complete or upload applicable progress reporting to the state tracking system peer, which again is required by Florida Administrative Code. The primary reason for some of these exceptions, and this is noted in the report, is really rooted in what we highlight in observation two, which is really a lack of sufficient guidance for documenting some of these things and defining the expectations. So I'll go into that during observation two, but I'll briefly highlight management's response as it relates to observation one. The primary action that will be taken by management, which again is included in the report, is the development of a handbook that specifically outlines expectations and explicitly defines criteria relating to the most common services and accommodations that should be documented, and how those actions should be documented. Additionally, there will be targeted training regarding roles, responsibilities, and expectations of the support staff, so that all requirements and compliance is met through this process and ultimately there's more consistency throughout the schools. Any questions regarding observation one? Observation two is really focused on the consistency and maturity of the program. So as I alluded to, some of the underlying or root causes for observation one are really kind of encompassed here in observation two. So during our review, what we identified is there's an absence of clearly defined and consistently enforced district-wide framework for ESE services and oversight. So standardized procedures, training tools, monitoring mechanisms, all key actions that would be expected as it relates to oversight of the program. So specifically, we observed variability across schools on how evidence of ESE service delivery is documented, retained, and monitored. And this is largely a result of a lack of centralized monitoring or quality assurance framework used to evaluate the effectiveness of the ESE service or accommodation delivery. So in the observation, we highlight KPIs as an example of a way to evaluate the success of ESE service delivery. Management did highlight in here a few key changes, one of which being what I have already mentioned in observation one, the development of a handbook that defines expectations. That will help significantly, and I think that will help define what those expectations are so that we can see some of these documentation challenges remediated. But there's also some additional actions that will be taken. Unified organizational charts, standard operating procedures will be documented and developed. Quarterly sampling audits, where resources permit, will be performed to hold the schools accountable. And then, like I said, develop KPIs that could be used to monitor the performance of ESE services and the delivery of those services and accommodations. That is observation two. Any questions there?
Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. As far as the handbook, who is to ensure that everybody is reading that handbook? The accountability part of that? And then, of course, the documentation of all of that.
Understood. Yeah, I believe the management response highlights the ESE services team as leading that charge, but I'll defer to management as to any specific responsible party that they see taking on that responsibility.
Yes, if I may, through the chair. You know, obviously, this entire audit has caught our attention, right? Very important. And coming in as the relatively new superintendent, I really appreciate RSM's work, you know, to surface areas where we're doing well, and obviously when we find areas that there are opportunities for improvement. So, you know, ultimately, I hold the chief academic officer, who will be overseeing the management's response to this. He and his team have developed that, and it's my expectation that those things will be happening. And so that's who will be ultimately responsible for ensuring the completion of the actions provided for you.
Thank you.
The next item that we'll be reviewing are the results of our follow-up testing. So as a reminder, follow-up testing is the process that we go through to validate that the management action plans that were stated in previous audit reports have been carried out, and that those actions meet the underlying risk that was observed during the original audits. The intention of that is to provide some level of update, or I won't say assurance, right? But some level of confidence that those action plans are on track. So follow-up testing, the results you see here reflect the audit reports that are previously issued that have open audit items. What you'll see is across these eight reports, there was a total of 38 original observations. And, you know, happy to see that we've closed over half of those so far. So we have 13 that are in progress, five that are not ready for testing as a result of this, for a total of 18. I think that demonstrates some significant progress for a number of these audits. Obviously, you know, there's some of these that remain open, such as purchasing and procurement compliance. That's a report that was issued in 2021 that still has an item open. Some of these items are open because we've retested some of the actions that they've taken, and we identified exceptions. In other instances, it's because they need a little bit longer time to implement some of the processes or systems that it may take to remediate the underlying risks. So overall, we've seen some significant progress as we report on follow-up testing, and I think this dashboard reflects that. And for the board's benefit, our process here moving forward as we look to fiscal year '26 will actually be to report on follow-up testing on a quarterly basis when we meet with the audit committee, as a way just to reinforce accountability and make sure that we have a closer communication with management throughout the year to make sure that these actions are being taken and are on track. A lot of our process within follow-up is testing, but we also want to be a support system, so having that quarterly communication is going to be key. Any questions as it relates to follow-up testing? Perfect. Okay. So then that leads us to our final item here, which is the proposed fiscal year '26 plan. So as Matt alluded to, we've now completed our fiscal year '25 audit plan. We met with the audit committee twice during the month of July to refine and identify the audit committee's recommendations for fiscal year '26. And the bullets that you're seeing here on the screen reflect those recommendations. So the first being a sensitive data protection project, that's an IT-specific project, a budgeting project, contract administration, follow-up testing, as I've alluded to, will be a continuous project, and then a fiscal year '27 risk assessment. So I can briefly walk through kind of an idea of what the scope would be for each of these audits, and then obviously answer any questions you might have, if you don't already have any for us. Perfect. So I'll start with the sensitive data protection. It's best practice on any internal audit plan to have at least one IT project, so that's not, there's no exception here. Sensitive data protection is a very common audit that we do for many of our school districts just due to the nature of the audit. The primary objective of this project would be to assess how the district is managing access, encryption, and monitoring of the sensitive data that exists within the district. But we will specifically focus on the student information system focus, as well as the ERP system, PeopleSoft, as we look to evaluate how sensitive data is being protected. We'll focus on standards, controls, technology that's employed, and designed to protect this information at both the student and the employee level within these systems. We'll evaluate the logical and the privilege access, review the user access, excuse me, the user review process, user access review process. We'll look at segregation of duties, the change of management, policies and procedures, as well as reviewing data encryption and the technologies that are in place to manage encryption. So really valuable audit, valuable audit from an IT perspective. Any questions on this project? Perfect. The second item is budgeting. So this has been on our proposed plan on our last risk assessment. This was on the plan. It's been a continuous topic, so I would imagine it's not necessarily a surprise to see it here. The goal of this project would be to evaluate the internal controls that exist within the budgeting process as it exists today, specifically budget development, monitoring, reporting, and the budget modifications that take place. So one of the key parts of this process from a procedural perspective that we'll perform will be evaluating how the data is obtained, how it's reviewed, how it's verified for accuracy, and ultimately reported through the board. We'll look at the timeliness, the accuracy, and the usefulness of budget status reports and communications that are issued, not just once a year, but throughout the year. We'll look at segregation of duties and how those are designed between the preparation, the approval, execution, and the reporting phases of that, as well as how budget modification amendment processes are authorized. Any questions related to this project? Perfect, okay. Third being contract administration. So just as a reminder, you might see this and think, you know, in 2022, we actually did a similar project, but I just want to highlight a key difference. In 2022, we did a contract compliance audit, which focused on district-wide processes for managing contracts. So that's both development and execution of contracts. What we're proposing here would be an internal audit that evaluates contract monitoring and administration of specific high-risk projects. So what we would do is select a sample of up to five contracts that are managed by departments within the district, and we will evaluate against provisions of those contracts. So for example, how vendor monitoring procedures are being managed for those specific contracts, invoice review and approval procedures, the adequacy of documentation that's provided by vendors or suppliers related to that contract. We'll analyze the high-risk terms and conditions within that contract, and then ultimately test for compliance for the provisions that exist within those contracts. So we see a number of high-risk contracts within districts. Some of those have service level expectations, and there's also expectations of the district. So we'll evaluate those provisions within the contract to ensure that the underlying intention of those contracts are being met. Again, a pretty common audit that we do to provide some level of assurance that contracts are being managed properly. There are no questions on contract administration. I'll wrap up on the last two. Follow-up testing this year will be pretty significant. So if you might remember the dashboard we had up here earlier, that was the result of this year's follow-up testing. We will have a few new audits that will be added to that list for a total of 10 audit reports. That'll be within follow-up testing. So a total of 41 observations that will be following up on in this upcoming fiscal year. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Forty-one was the total observations, but 26 remain open. So 10 audit reports, 26 open observations that we'll be evaluating through the course of fiscal year '26. That incorporates the three audits that we issued this year.
We have one question. Ms. Juvenelli?
And it's not a question, actually, just if you could confirm. So that number is obviously going to grow. Your follow-up's going to grow as you do more audits, right? And then, once the, once, let's say, there's no, the follow-up is closed, or would you close out those when they finalize all the outstanding corrections that they're making? So will that come off your list? You won't really, okay.
Correct, yeah. They will fall off the list. For example, HR, the recruiting and onboarding report that we issued in 2021, happy to say we've closed all the items as of the dashboard that you just saw. So that'll come off the list, for example. We have one, two, three, three audits that have only one open item. So once we test those, if we can validate and close those, those will be three additional audits that'll come off. So 10 audit reports seems like a lot, but a number of those only have one item that remains open.
Great, thank you so much for clarity.
Okay. And then the last item is our fiscal year '27 risk assessment. So we issued our last risk assessment in June of 2024. We delivered most of the items that were included on that proposed top 10 last year with many of the remaining items included on this year's proposed plan. So we would project to start this risk assessment process next May in 2026, and that will allow us to timely develop and start our fiscal year '27 audit plan after the summer and ultimately have, you know, go through the process of bringing those proposed items through the audit committee and to the board. So we usually do this risk assessment every other year, so this is right in line with how we traditionally delivered the risk assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, do you want to, go ahead?
Yes, thank you very much. First of all, I think I can speak on behalf of our entire governance team. This is a governance team that is very interested in getting better. We are all committed to having good things happen in our school district, and you are even helping us even more. So just thank you very much for your candor. Thank you for telling us accurately where we stand relative to all of these items. And just as a note to our board, as a reminder, I have tapped Dr. Cupid McCoy, who, when I first came on board, she and I had a conversation. We found that we did not have what I would call a systematic approach to how we wrangle all of these different audits, including RSM, how we track the findings, and then, most importantly, how we incorporate them into our standard operating procedures. Because that, to me, is when we've hit Mecca, is like when we have incorporated in our daily work. We don't just give a management response and say it's done. We make sure it becomes part of our daily process. That's the most important thing for me and for all of us as a team. So just thank you for surfacing them. Thank you for being a resource to us when we look for best practice out there across the nation. That's what we're all about. I really commend you on the identification of items for the FY '26 audit plan. Again, I think you've hit the, you know, hit it out of the ballpark again. Those are areas where we absolutely are, you know, have the opportunity to get better, and we'll continue to work on that, the follow-up and the incorporation into our SOP. So just thank you for helping us improve as a district.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Fisher, then Ms. Juvenelli?
Just a real quick comment. Thank you to RSM as well. I just want to point out, thank you to the superintendent team. This is the first time that I've seen under that human resources recruiting and onboarding from May 2021. We do not have anything left from that audit, so I'm glad to see that. I know there's obviously going to be continued follow-up work on that, but I'm glad to see that we're finally closing some of these out. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Dr. Carlin, this is actually for Dr. Carlin, but thank you, gentlemen, for the hard work, the RSMs. We rely on you heavily. This is actually for the superintendent. So regarding the ESE plan of action, will you be bringing anything back to the board once we know? So, because I'm curious about changes, like the changes, and I know you inherited this, so I'm gonna put that disclaimer out there first, but how, you know, what is the plan? Because for me, it just boils down to training, the lack of, and accountability, the lack of, that has not happened to, because we get funding for ESE students.
That's correct.
And so we need to be putting those dollars to those students. And I don't feel like that's been happening, so that therefore there are a shortfall in that. So I would hope that you bring back a workshop for us to see those changes and what the plan is, because there's got to be a plan, because we haven't been holding anyone accountable, and therefore that's how we've gotten behind the eight ball on this.
Absolutely. We would be pleased to do that. That's why Dr. Shaker and the entire team is here today. They have been paying very close attention to this matter. Obviously, this is something that is very important to us. All of our students matter.
Right.
All of our students matter, and that's why, you know, he is ultimately accountable. Even though we're all new, we hold the accountability for that, and we will be happy to bring forward a plan.
Yeah. Because I think we've got to do something different. So I want y'all to show us, you're the experts.
Absolutely.
Show us what you're going to do different to have a different outcome. Thank you.
Absolutely. We do have our plan identified. Dr. Shaker and team identified that in the management response, but we would be happy to keep you updated as we make progress on that plan, which I think is what we're all interested in seeing. So thank you, ma'am, very much.
Mr. Persons?
I want to give a little shout-out to the audit committee. I'm no longer the liaison of that, but they're usually pretty good at coming up with areas to look into. They were the ones that put me on the ESE audit that I asked to have added last year. Glad we don't have quite so many audits going on this year as we did last year, which is good, get really thorough. But I'm sure all the board members look at their emails, and they get so many of this and this coming, but ESE was one of the larger components all the time. And it's a difficult job, simple as that, to not only just to monitor it, but to do it. So I'm glad, I may have put extra resources, so I know, as a board member, happy to listen to whatever comes forward from the superintendent and support it, because we're going to get it done. Thank you.
I think it was Mr. Ribble, then I'll go to Ms. Juvenelli.
Yeah, I just want to compliment RSM for doing a great job. I was really impressed with reading through your fleet audit, and I have some suggestions for that. I totally support what your findings and your comments were. I think without a doubt, in my mind, fleet appearance of our school buses is our brand, and I think we do a pretty good job as a district maintaining that brand out there when I see equipment that's well-painted and it looks like it's in pretty good shape. But other than that, there are some suggestions I'd like to make as far as some of the automotive servicing that you talked about, preventive maintenance. I'm not so sure, according to your audit, that we're following a good PMI schedule, and that's key to keeping that fleet running. There's nothing worse for a bus driver than having a bus full of kids and having the thing break down, and you know what happens with the mass chaos when you have a breakdown. So to me, preventive maintenance and preventing a breakdown is really important for us. I think we should have a number that we can find every day. We call it car days per road call in the industry. So what's our breakdown frequency? How many bus breakdowns do we have the day before? What can we do so our drivers have the confidence? But as a board, we want to support those folks. The other thing is running out of fuel. That's a big one in the industry. Believe it or not, you might have the best preventive maintenance program, but the vehicle doesn't get fueled, and that's a no-no in the industry. So we ought to take a look at that number. And then the last comment I'm going to make, you did a great job of auditing the part replacement. I can tell you, going back to the 1980s and 90s militarily-wise, the military stopped using secondhand parts off of aircraft. You know what happened in the Iran deal in 1984? Used parts taken off a bus that's sitting out there for years. It's a crapshoot if that part's even, if you take a fuel pump off of there, it's a crapshoot that that fuel pump is even going to work, let alone the time it takes to have a mechanic go out there, go through all those buses to find out where that part is, and then the time of taking it off there. It's just not worth it. We know as carriers that buying that part right off the shelf, brandy-new to replacement, is more dependable and will give our drivers confidence in that we're doing the right thing to maintain our equipment, which in turn will help with morale. Plus, the morale of mechanics. Mechanics don't like to go out hunting parts in a yard, in the middle Mechanics don't like to go out hunting parts in a yard in the middle of the night with a flashlight. It just does not work for everyone. So it's a win-win to order that part brand-new, and those are my comments.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Ribble, because I would totally agree with your assessment on that. But it was a very enlightening audit, though.
It was.
Mm-hmm. But I just wanted to bring up one thing, back to the ESE. There's a lot of documentation and paperwork that teachers have, and, and this is for the superintendent and, and the chief as well out there. We need, that, that process needs to be so simplified and streamlined where it's almost a click of a button for them, because that's what happens is, the, the work might been performed, but there's no documentation to back it up from the audit that I could, you know, could see. And, or, you know, so I just, I really wanted to reiterate that, that we need to make sure that the processes for the teachers to document needs to be really simplified, and I think that's, would be a win-win for them and to help keeping that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Absolutely. If I may, through the Chair, so the, the really, really good news is that this has been identified, and the excellent news is that management has a response. So many of us have been teachers. You know, I can still, still consider myself a teacher, even though I've been a principal, been a superintendent, am a superintendent. We always have a teacher's heart. That's where we start. So I couldn't agree with you more, trying to simplify the processes, and I know that's part of Dr. Shaker's plan, as well as his team. So just thank you for emphasizing that. Anything we can take off of teachers' backs is really important, because then we allow them to do their most important function, which is to teach. Having said that, there is always paperwork that goes with it, right? And I did it as a teacher for a number of years, documented my ESOL strategies, my ESE strategies. We all had methods of doing that, those that have been teachers, and we'll try to make that as easy and as simple as possible. So thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I want to thank you, because yes, this ESE, to me, is really, really important, and I know that we are all looking into making it better, and I, and with that, with the documentations and everything, and the possibility too, is, is just making sure that we have enough staff, the right staff for what the kids need, so accommodations. So, and that should be, I'm sure that's going to be probably part of the plan, and I am looking forward to it. And thank you, Ms. Juvenelli, for bringing up what you brought up. I really appreciate that a lot. And, Mr. Ribble, that was great, too. I learned from you. But I did one question, please, to my friends over here. I really do appreciate all that you do for us and the longevity that you've had with us. And can you please, I know there was a little bit of conversation at the last meeting, which I think was a little bit over a week ago, regarding the possibility of bringing somebody else on, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware, waste, fraud, and abuse, that is something that you all have done for us and can do for us as our auditors, correct?
We do from time to time, but really that, it comes from the Board Attorney's Office. When, when the Board Attorney receives complaints, if the Board Attorney feels that it's something that we can help with, she'll reach out and ask, and we'll have that discussion, and then if it is something that we can help with, we craft a scope and discuss that with her team, and then execute those as, as assigned essentially by the Board Attorney. Yes, we do help with that.
Thank you. I just want, because I know there were some of the Board members who have not been here as long as you have been here, so thank you for sharing that.
Ms. Juvenelli?
And, you know, thank you, Ms. Jordan, for bringing that up. That's, I do want to say that, RSM, you've been a game changer for Lee County, and, because you don't know what you don't know. So with you pointing that out, it's, it's just been tremendous, because, and just a huge asset. Talking about value, we do get our bang for our buck with you guys, okay? Really, truly, because, um, there's just so much, and we're not experts, but you managed to get that for us, and, and then put it in the perspective that we understand it, and then we find that those deficiencies, that's how you correct it, is pointing them out. So just thank you, because we haven't had RSM really that long, and it's, it's, you've made great strides for us. So just thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you.
Can you all remind me, your next update will be, what, December, January for us? Probably February, something like that.
It's not scheduled yet, but sure, yes, we, I mean, we would, so I think, hearing no comments on the audit plan that we had proposed today, we will create a statement of work based on that, what was listed in, in the, in the proposed audit plan, and then that, my understanding is that that would come before the, you at the next meeting in September. And then we would then basically work with management, the superintendent, to start those audits and to map out when we would start each one, so there's not too much overlap and things like that, how they would start throughout the year. And then, yes, we would, I mean, we serve at your pleasure, so we're happy to come as often as you like. You know, typically, we would do maybe like a quarterly update. So, yeah, we, if we go with that route, we would be back in the late fall.
The, the reason I ask that, and Dr. Carlin kind of mentioned this a little bit in the beginning, kind of compiling this, I don't know if there'd be an opportunity for us, perhaps, October, November, to maybe have a little bit of follow-up on the, the items that are still open, the management responses, to kind of see where we're at, maybe if we get an update, if that would be possible.
Absolutely. Would be pleased to do that. It'd be a great time to showcase the work of Dr. Cupid McCoy and how she's been partnering with our chiefs of our divisions to close those loops. So we'd be pleased to showcase that.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I do appreciate the information in front of us. Yes, Dr. Carlin, you're right, once you have that teacher hat on, you just never take it off. I agree with most everything that has been said today. The one thing I will say, somebody touched upon, having the amount, having the right amount of staff, but not only that, but making sure that from the ground up, that teachers are supported. And I think that's where the frustration comes in for our teachers, especially our brand-new teachers, right out, you know, they, they, this is going to be their first opportunity to work with, with students that have, you know, IEPs and 504s, and just, you know, I think it's just really important that we provide the support and really the culture that it's okay to ask questions that you don't know the answer to. You're not expected to know the answers to all of these questions, and I think that is what teacher, that is when teachers hesitate to start targeting students. You know, I can't tell you how many times, as a fifth grader, I would have a student and, and not a single documentation on, and you, as a teacher, you, you have to wonder, how, how did they get into my classroom without any documentation? They can't read past a second-grade level. And I just think it's really important to provide that support for our brand-new teachers, teachers new to our district. I mean, we're all about retaining retention, and besides safety, student achievement is our, is our top priority. And that starts with classrooms, and it starts all the way at the ground level, and, you know, even, especially identifying students early on, so.
Dr. Carlin?
I, I absolutely want to concur with what you're, what you're saying, Mrs. Fleming, and, you know, one of our district's efforts today, starting today, was meeting with our secondary teachers tomorrow, our elementary teachers, our new teachers, to get them off on the right start. I had the pleasure of speaking with them this morning, and then it was right off to the races. It was right into classroom management and the types of instructional strategies that work with children. The really good news, and I know we've been celebrating this on social media, but, you know, this would be the right time to say, you know, we, we are there. I mean, we have our teacher vacancies filled, and they will be filled, you know, some of our schools had a couple of vacancies. Our coaches are stepping into those roles, and they will take those roles on starting Monday, and then as, you know, additional teachers are hired, those coaches can step out. But our commitment to this community was to start the year with a teacher in every classroom. So if I'm a math coach and you're a reading coach, we are going to be teaching, starting on Monday, if our school has two openings. And once that third-grade position gets filled, or that ESE position gets filled, we can step back into our coaching role, but our number-one job is to do exactly what we're talking about, support children and their learning, and to support our colleagues, especially our new colleagues coming in. Imagine if we had three new teachers on our team, and this is our team right here, you know, the three of us are new. We're counting on the five of you to help guide us, right? Certainly, our administrators are part of that, they're a huge part of that, but our teams are so important, and that's why the work of Kelly Stedman, our regionals, and others is so critical, because they help us with systems at schools. They go in, they go into PLCs, they go walk classrooms with our principals and our assistant principals, they find areas where additional support is needed, and they push that in. And that's why this year we were so successful, taking those 4D schools and moving them to Cs. It's about on-the-ground support. That's what it takes, and that's why we're seeing success. So thank you for pointing that out. The support is necessary, and it is now being provided. Very proud to say we'll have a teacher in every classroom. That makes a difference.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin, and thank you again this afternoon.
Thank you all for the kind comments. We're delighted to be here and certainly delighted to be helping mature this function for the Board, so thank you very much.
Excellent. Have a great afternoon.
Safe and clear after Star School.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the discussion of the School Board Attorney and General Counsel Contract. At the July 29 meeting, the Board expressed interest in moving forward with this discussion in the presence of Conflict Counsel. Attorney John Quick with Weiss-Serota Healthman Cole &amp; Beerman P.L. is here today to assist us with this discussion.
Thank you. And, Madam Chair, as Attorney Quick will be Conflict Counsel, I am going to vacate my seat for the use of Attorney Quick during this discussion. Please, come on up. Yes.
It's good to see everyone. Thank you for having us, or having me, sorry. As you all are aware, we recent, as Vice Chair Langford Fleming indicated, the, the School Board recently indicated they wanted to bring this forward today, asked for me to be in attendance. In the meantime, I have spoken with, with each of you individually to see where things stand, as I identified, and I will, I can go through it all, identified really what, what looked to be like seven key sticking points in the potential employment contract or amended employment contract for the School Board Attorney. Spoke with this, with the seven of you individually. As it stands, based upon the feedback I got from each of you, I don't currently have a path to a, an approved agreement. As you can imagine, it's, I, I think I described it to some of you, it's like a jigsaw puzzle trying to get the pieces to fit together. There's seven of you, and there's seven components, and while School Board Member One may say, I'm yes to one, three, and six, you know, School Board Member Two may say, I'm good with six, but no to one and three, but I also want four. So trying to get those pieces to fit together is, is there a path where we can get to an agreement where there's four of you that would support it? And also, obviously, you have your School Board Attorney on the other side, that she would agree to it as well. So the, the seven items that I identified, that I spoke with you each about, were the inclusion, language included in the contract that's currently in there, what I'll call the legal structure, where it delineates the School Board Attorney, the location, the Assistant School Board Attorneys, that, that type of information delineated in the agreement. There is another provision that was being proposed to be added that related to what I'll call like off-campus items, speaking engagements, things like that. There is a element in there that was being proposed to be included that the, the School Board Attorney would need to get approval from the Chair, or I guess if the, if the Chair didn't agree or, or didn't respond, majority vote of the School Board. Third item is the, the termination, part of the termination clause. Right now, the, the clause requires a supermajority of the School Board to, to terminate. It's, it's being proposed to reduce that to a simple majority, so, so four of seven. The, there's another clause as well in terms of the, the contract, when it reaches its end date, that it would then, if you all are not able to reach an agreement, at least under the proposal, not able to reach agreement, that it would then continue on, on a month-to-month basis. So, you know, if, say it ends in April, if you all haven't figured something out in terms of what you want to do with the, with the School Board Attorney, she would then be on for another month for a contract, and then it would renew again another month if, if you're not able to determine what you all want to do. Then the next two deal with salary-related items. So the fifth one is, in the current contract, there's a provision that provides the School Board Attorney with automatic salary increases commensurate with your administrative staff. That was being proposed to be removed. And then there was a request to increase the salary, the, the current base salary, and have it be retroactive to April 27th of this year. And then the final element had to do with severance, in terms of if the School Board Attorney is terminated without cause, that there is a, the provision in there as to severance that would be paid out to her, and how much severance that is. As a reminder, and I know I spoke with each of you individually, and I reminded each of you, I believe I did, I hope I did, if not, I'll remind you now, there is a limit in term, under Florida law, as to how much severance can be paid, and that is, that's 20 weeks is the, is the max by Florida statute. So those were the seven elements. The, I've spoken with, with Kathy as well to try to figure out, you know, what are some of the elements of these that are absolute musts, and are there any that she could walk back from? And I was able to negotiate a little bit, there, there were some, but still, it, it doesn't give me that path to, to four votes. And, and that's really, obviously, ultimately, what you need, is you need four votes to, to do an amended contract. So where does that leave you all? It leaves you, you've got, you, you currently have a, a contract with your School Board Attorney. It runs through 2026, so your options are, you could do nothing, and you all would proceed, and you'd move forward, and your School Board Attorney is under contract till 2026. I will remind you, as your Conflict Counsel, that in that agreement, there is an automatic renewal provision. So if you don't do anything by April 15th, it will automatically renew. So I, if, if you opt to not do anything today, or, or proceed with, with additional negotiations, I would recommend that the School Board, that we calendar for January or February so that you all can, can start that discussion early, I mean, whatever time, I would just recommend at least January or February, because that gives you a couple of months to make that determination as to, do you want to negotiate a new contract? Are you happy with the one it is and just willing to let it auto-renew, or, or something else? So I would recommend that if you decide to not move forward with anything today, at a minimum, you record that date, so you don't miss that date. There, the other alternative is, we, you know, obviously, I've been involved with this for about a week, and so we can continue the discussions to see if, if some additional time can bridge that gap. I understand, even though I've been involved for a week, you all have been involved for many months, so, you know, I just, I mentioned that there's that option. The other option is, if there's any changes since I last spoke with any one of you on any of the individual items, you know, there, there might, if there's any changes, there might be a way that I can piece together where, you know, we can get a, an agreement where the majority could support it or would support it. So I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the overall process or about any individual elements, you know, please let me know, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Persons?
How many of the seven points is there agreement on? Or is it all seven? We don't have four votes.
Well, on, on, well, I would say-
To your best of your knowledge, I know everything can change, so we actually vote.
Yeah, so on all of them, you have at least four votes to go one way, or there's people who say, listen, I could go either way, it doesn't really matter to me. The problem is getting those four votes to match up. So, so, you know, if you have, say, four, I'll just pick the, the first one, legal structure. If you have four that are willing to support it on legal structure, I need those same four to also support whatever the elements are for the remainder of them. So that, that's the toughest part. Honestly, the, the, is to get, because it's not consistent all the way across. So what School Board Member Persons might be willing to accept, you know, School Board Member Fisher might, you know, might be different. So while you might, you all might agree on some things- So, while you might, you all might agree on some things, it's getting four of you to agree on everything. Now, Kathy has indicated there are a couple of things that she'd be willing to forego. So, that obviously opens up more pathways to potentially get to four. But as I'm going through, you know, the little chart that I created for myself, so I can see, do I have, you know, four that go all the way along? I still don't have that. But there, obviously, there are some that are, what I would call bigger hurdles than others. And those tend to be really the salary-related ones, tends to be the, what appears to me, based on the conversations, the biggest hurdle to get four that are agreeable to other ones also in agreement on the salary-related items. Did I answer your question? I hope, it's a little long-winded, but.
Is that something we can have a discussion in the open about on a point? Is that the purpose of today? To try to maybe come to a consensus of more than four or five? I mean, you know who's, where, other places, but I wouldn't mind discussing it because we really haven't discussed each of those points with all of us on the dice.
Yeah, it's really up to you all if you want to have that discussion. Now, if you want to discuss it with fellow board members, School Board Members, it obviously has to be done here. It can't be, you can't do it privately, as you all know, and I can't act as a conduit between you all to convey information. So, if you want to have that discussion between the School Board as a whole, it would need to be at an open public meeting today or some other time, yes.
I would like to see that, see if we can come to a consensus. I mean, we're not going to vote on it today, I mean, in this meeting, but I don't know how the other board members feel.
Mr. Rivel.
Yeah, I agree with you. I'd like to discuss it today if we can. We have an hour here to bat it around. Maybe we could make some movement on two or three or four of these items. Because if we don't have this discussion in the open, these things, we're never going to solve this, we're never going to solve this thing without. So, I agree, I agree with Mr. Persons.
Ms. Giavennelli.
And I echo that, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I agree as well, but I do believe that the first one that was mentioned, the legal structure, I think we already discussed that when, and put that, that was to be left alone when we had our conversation about another attorney coming and that was decided at that time. So, that one should not even be on there because I believe that we already agreed upon that one.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I make a clarifying statement on that? It was the quest of the attorney to also have it in the contract that was happening during negotiations as well as what we did. I don't know if there's any change in that, but that was the reason for that being in there was Madam Board Attorney had requested the structure to be in the contract, even so we already had come to a decision.
Okay. Mr. Persons.
Being, I watch attorney shows. If it's something that's just repeating what's in our policy that we've discussed, I don't see a problem putting it in there. Again, I don't think it should, we've already voted and passed that specifically. I don't think it should be one of the sticking points if you have four, but whether, which four agree on that or don't agree on that, that one shouldn't be really that important because that's already part of our policy. If that makes sense.
Ms. Giavennelli.
And I would agree with that. I think the reason why Attorney Bruno wanted to add that into her contract is for security reasons as well as it has increased her duties from initially from when she was hired. So, I am not opposed to securing those duties and securing the legal structure. So, I would support that as well, thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
I guess this means we're going forward with the conversation? Okay. At that point, I just wanted to check. I will strongly object to that because we already have that in policy and if we ever want to change policy, then we're bound by the contract. I think no matter who it is outside of obviously electeds, we should be able to change our policy without the effect on that contract. I mean, things can change. So, that's why my strong legal objection to that. So, if we change a policy, that matters in the contract, why should we have that set for one employee? Again, it's nothing about specific employee, I'd say the same thing for when we have a board auditor.
Ms. Jordan.
I believe that that was brought up because of the fact that, and Ms. Giavennelli, we've lived through this, where we had two attorneys and who actually was the client of this attorney or that attorney? And who did they represent? So, when it was approved that the superintendent, nothing against the superintendent, that she has her own personal attorney for herself because she believes that she should have one, we still need to make sure that as a whole, that our attorney, our board attorney has the ability to take care of us as the clients and the district. So, that's, I have no problem with putting it in the contract.
Mr. Fisher.
I'm looking at it as a public organization, why should we have a structural, our structure is set through a contract of individual employee versus, we're governmental organizations, not a private business. I could see that in a private business, but our organization is defined by that, including the board attorney is our employee as well as a board auditor. So, why would we bound, be bound by a single contract that defines the entire legal organization for our entity?
Ms. Giavennelli, you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. So, I would have been inclined to agree with you and understand where you're coming from, but I lived it where the attorney that worked for the superintendent undermined our board attorney. And that is a fact, that happened and no one did a thing. It went so far as the board attorney was actually, had to be a whistleblower as well and that was, and that, and she was being undermined by the attorney that worked for the superintendent and it was a huge problem. And that's the reason why I believe she wants it in there as well. And now that we have an elected superintendent, that line where the board, I think it needs to be in there because otherwise, it's protecting the integrity actually of the actual board as well as the integrity for the superintendent because she's going to have her own attorney. So, I think, you would think everybody would work together at the best interest of the district, that's not the way it went down. And so, you won't, I won't be able, I won't ever be able to agree with you on that now at that point if I hadn't witnessed it and dealt with it myself.
Mr. Fisher.
But we got to discuss the organization as a whole, that's a specific fact pattern. That's why we have policy, the board defines the policy, not the superintendent. So, if we have an issue with the policy, we as a board change the policy. I'm just amazed that we would have a governmental structure within an individual contract for an employee. I'm blown away by that.
Mr. Rivel.
Okay, so, we're on number one. It looks like we spent 12 minutes on number one and I think we have four votes, the way it sounds, to support that language. So, how much longer do we need to beat this around?
Mr. Fisher.
What is the specific language? What are the words, what are we supporting? What version? Because there's been multiple versions of what's going to be in there.
I think it's the verbiage that was sent out, correct?
Yeah, I have the most recent red line, which was from April, I think it was. But whatever the most recent red line was, is the language that I've, at least that I've been working off of.
Would you mind reading that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, the language, as I see it, it's on page two of that draft that's proposed to be stricken, says, "The board shall provide Dupuy Bruno with adequate office space, assistant School Board Attorneys, legal administrative and/or paralegal assistance, telephone service, email service, legal publications, and office supplies necessary for the maintenance of an attorney's office at the District Administrative Building presently located here at 2855 Colonial Boulevard, Fort Myers, Florida 33966." And it also has language just before that says, "Dupuy Bruno shall serve as the chief legal officer for the school district." That is being proposed to be stricken as well. Let me just make sure there's not another one that would... If, I would say it might behoove you all if, since it says that she's the chief legal officer for the school district, you might want to, it might behoove you if you do want to proceed with, is to maybe, I'm sure that there's language that could be worked out to clarify with regard to the School Board Attorney and the superintendent's attorney. Frankly, could probably just pull it straight from the policy, but since it says the chief legal officer, if you're going to include that, it would probably behoove the board to recognize that structure as it currently exists.
Ms. Chiviano, then Ms. Giavennelli.
Just to be clear, so the red line copy that I have has that actually stricken.
Correct, yes. Yeah, being proposed, that was the draft that, as I understood it, the School Board was proposing to strike that language, yes. And that Mr. Dupuy Bruno was not agreeable to striking that.
Anything else? Ms. Giavennelli.
So, and I'll give you an example. So, we were, we were actually served a subpoena for a lawsuit and it went all the way to mediation without the board attorney ever knowing that that was, there was even a lawsuit. And that was because of the district staff attorney did not advise, and so therefore, the board knew nothing of it as well as the attorney. So, that is a perfect example. We could have these processes and we say it, but if the superintendent's not enforcing it and holding that accountable and we know nothing about it and the attorney knows nothing about it, then we're just at, I mean, we went all the way to, it went all the way to an executive session where we had to make a decision that was quite expensive at the very last second, the very last hour. So, I understand we have, we have a policy, but if we, if it happens that way and the information doesn't get to the board attorney, the board may never know anything about it. And I don't want to say what case that was, but trust me, we did not win that case. We lost. So, we lost quite dearly. So, because of that problem of her not getting the subpoena, not aware of it, and the only reason why we had, because we had to make a decision on settling that mediation. So, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
And I want to say too, this, that language, if you look at other counties, you know, within the 67 districts, there are other counties who actually do have this in their contracts, in their attorney's contracts, that provides the space and everything that that has, that has been mentioned here. And I cannot say enough, like Ms. Giavennelli, we lived it and not saying that that would happen again, but just the mere fact of the communication was just not happening.
Mr. Fisher, then Mr. Persons.
Last thought to ponder, just again, when I look at that, I get a special fact pattern, I just, what is the purpose of having policy then? That's my question as we ponder this.
Mr. Persons.
I mean, policy are in the contract as long as they're in agreement. You know, if everybody wanted to take it out of the contract, I'd be fine keeping it in, I'm fine. Because it's just a redundant, to me, type thing. But I think what we need to remember on this contract, I think we should go point by point and vote on it. And if we can't get four on any one point, then that's taken out of the contract. Once the whole contract is done, I could read contracts all day long that we pass, there might be one little spot in there I don't like, but the overall board likes it, then it passes. I don't see where we have to have the same four agree on every single point. It's just, do you agree, do we have four that agree overall with the contract? Because like any contract, there's not going to be everything in there you want and I think we need to be able to put this in. The other thing to remember is, this is, this contract would sunset when? I mean...
It's April, well, if you don't notify by April 15th, it would auto-
I meant this new one.
Yeah, April 15, 2026.
Yeah, that's not that far away. So, anything we do, then it has to be done again. We can look at it a little closer to see what's working or not working with the superintendent's staff attorney or whatever. You know, that'll be a new contract.
And you guys are, if you're comfortable doing that where, you know, if you have four for everything, I mean, that's up to the board. I didn't want to make that decision for you all, obviously, though, because-
And again, that's just my-
Yeah, because there might be some that, you know, you might feel strongly about and others, like you said, you're fine either way.
Mr. Fisher.
Just a question, point of clarification. It was my understanding, I guess, maybe I understood this wrong, that instead of just amending the current contract, this would be a new contract to replace the current contract and this would be for the future and whatever date. That was my impression of what this was going to be. That this one, you know, we're essentially, we would agree to, you know, both parties would voluntarily end the current contract, we start a new contract with all these new terms that would continue based on whatever said terms are in it.
For the, for the draft that I have and as I understand it, that's correct, yeah, that this was a, this was a contract, but you're not, it's not like an addendum to the existing contract where you would continue existing under that one. This would be a new one.
So, it would be a two-year contract from the date we pass it? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Fisher? Again, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, through the chair, it would be up to whatever we decide. That's what I'm saying. This is, that's what I was trying to finish this in a week, but...
Yeah, I like a two-year time period and I think that's time enough to adjust it and I think, and go from there. If there's fragrant, then we can always do what we have to do. Problem.
I'd like to make a suggestion that, obviously, this is a sticky point for, you know, it's almost a 50/50 if there were eight of us, it sounds like. So, I'd like to suggest too, we've heard our, we've heard each other's ideas and stances, can we move on to the number two? You said there were seven, just so that if we cannot conclude this today, it'd be nice to be able to get through all seven, hear a little bit of what each of us think if we, and then if we have to revisit this, obviously, we have had this discussion.
Yeah, I think that's prudent because I don't know what discussions it had before, but this might be the first time you're hearing from your fellow board members.
That is correct. So, if we could just move through two through seven and have a short discussion, see where it's that, I'm asking the board if that's, okay, thank you.
So, the second item is on, if you have the draft, at least of the latest draft, it's on page two. It's about three-quarters of the way down the page, it's the second sub-paragraph A under paragraph four. And it's the addition there, this again relates to outside items like speaking items. There is a proposed addition, it's in the red line to be added, that says that the, one of the conditions for the outside speaking engagement or the like would be that it's approved by the board chair or a majority vote of the board. That is, and I, just so you know, in my discussion, since we're going to be talking about them, I have had different things from all of you. Some of you want to keep it, some of you want to take it out, others have said only if it impacts the workday or only, I just think they should just have to notify, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be approval or something. So, there's, it's, some of the discussions I've had aren't just simply keep it or take it out, I just want to mention that to set that up.
Thank you. Mr. Persons, then I'll go to Fisher and Giavennelli.
Yeah, I don't see where we can dictate to any employee what they do outside of their work time, including each other, whether we can go to a meeting or teach a class or do whatever, as long as it doesn't, isn't during the normal work period. I think anything that does involve like a conference, that getting off work or whatever, we need to approve and we have in the past, there's nothing different there. But if someone wants to go on a Saturday and give a talk to their association or to a club or teach a class at night at FGCU, I'm trying to think what an attorney might want to do. I don't see where we have any say-so in that. So, that's just, again, that's just my take on it.
So, I'll follow up with that and then move to Mr. Fisher. I agree with you, Mr. Persons, and it was not my understanding that this was asking for something completely like a Saturday or a Sunday or a holiday to go speak. This, to me, the way I read this was an agreement that if they, if she was going to go speak at a conference and FSBA approval would be needed, which I think we do that anyway. So, Mr. Fisher, you were next.
I was going to agree, I think we should just leave it how it was before. I mean, we haven't had any, to my knowledge- I mean, we haven't had any, and to my knowledge, we haven't had any issues, and, and our board attorney is a professional, or any other professional, it's, I think we should just leave that one alone.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Actually, I would completely agree with that. I think my only question is, if they're going to speak at a conference, and they're getting paid for that, I don't think that, that's something that, I mean, and this would not be like FSBA, because we would pay for that. I'm talking about like, I don't know, going to Chicago and speaking at a school board conference that none of us are at, or, and it's strictly, you know, their expertise, but, you know, to, to, to other, let's say, education attorneys, that's on, she's getting paid for that, I don't think that we should be paying that. But, so I, I just, that's my only little take on it. I just want to make sure that that's clear for me. Thank you.
And I think, just to address, I think in the agreement, it says that, yeah, she's exclusively the employee of the, of the board, so I think that if she were to be getting paid, I mean, I'd, I'd have to consult with a, somebody who's more professional, you know, a labor attorney, but I believe that that would probably, should be covered by that, if she's exclusively a employee of the, the district, than if she's getting paid for outside work, it, it seems like, I, that could, that could be covered already. Let me just take, see if I, while you're talking, I'm going to see if I can, can analyze the agreement, see if that's covered in there already.
Mr. Rivel?
No, I agree, I don't, I don't think she should double dip, and I don't think that's her, it's her intent, but I'm going to be flexible on number two, but every, I'm going to vote either way. If this gets this thing done, I'll flip-flop, either way, you want me to do number two.
Okay. Understood. Mr. Persens?
While he's looking it up, or whatever, again, I think it determines, are you double dipping if you're doing it on, you're on time? Does that?
Yeah, and, and in that clause too, it does say that it shall, it's going to be undertaken on vacation days, personal days, holidays, or other non, non-duty work time. So, it's, it, it's anticipated in that clause that it would not be during a regular school district work day.
So, I, I would consider that double dipping, and I, I would be fine with being compensated for something like that.
I agree. Ms. Chivianelli?
I agree, and I know the other item that struck out on this is teaching and consulting, so we're in line with that piece of it.
That was not an issue she had raised with me when I spoke with her about that being struck out, it was just the subsection D.
Approved by board chair.
Yeah, that was, that was all that it was, was it, that she had raised with me. So, if that changes, obviously, I'll have to let you all know, but as of right now, that, that's what, no, she hadn't raised that with me.
Okay. All right, I think we can move on from two.
Yeah, and, and three, honestly, we can move pretty quickly on that one. That one was going from super majority to majority. When I spoke with Kathy in the negotiations, she was willing to move to a, a simple majority if, obviously, that, it would have, she'd have to be in agreement with the other items. So, that one, I think, if you're in favor of super majority, I assume you're probably okay with her moving from majority, since she's doing that voluntarily.
Yes.
So, number four is, is the provision in the termination clause, and that is section 15. It starts on the top of the red line document, page 11, where it says that the contract shall be deemed to have been renewed, and it strikes out for an additional two years, and then adds a, on a month-to-month basis to allow time to negotiate a long-term contract. In my conversations, the, it's, my understanding, her objection is to the additional language on adding it to a month-to-month contract. And, you know, I've spoken with each of you, I've, I've given you kind of my, my thoughts on, you know, the relationship on a month-to-month basis, but that's, that's really the next one to see where you all stand on that.
Okay, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As long as there's no auto renewal, what I know, which was out of that, we don't need a month-to-month, but that's an issue with the attorney.
That's my suggestion.
Mr. Persens?
So, she leaves if the contract's not renewed by the end of thing? She just walked out? Is that how, how it would work?
Yeah, under, currently, the contract would end, and she would no longer be under contract with the, with the school board. So, you all would need to either have anticipated that in the beginning, which I assume you all would, because, you know, all of this stuff is calendared, and, and you would presumably either have a decision of, we want to renegotiate, or maybe everybody's happy, and you can, we just say, we want to renew the contract. You, you are allowed to renew it by affirmative vote if you want, it just wouldn't auto-renew. Or then, obviously, the alternative is, is, you know, seeking, if she goes, goes away, seeking a, you know, new, somebody new for that position.
I just had one follow-up.
Sure.
Being you work for other districts and things, if it was a superintendent that was employed, and his contract ran out, is it normally, they just walk out the door if it's not been renewed, or if they're in negotiations, or how, how does that work?
Usually.
I haven't been in that situation, so it's just modern.
So, if there's a termination, and there's not what we call an evergreen provision, which is this auto-renew provision, usually, those negotiations begin well in advance, because you realize, you know, we've got our CEO here, and we need to, I mean, using the superintendent example, we need to figure out what we're going to do, because, you know, if you don't keep that person, your chances are, you know, you'll, you're, you're going to have to go through a process to hire, you're going to have to put the information out, go through interviews, might have to hire an interim superintendent to bridge the gap. So, there's, there usually are discussions that, that come into play months in advance, because you're, when you're dealing with somebody at this, at that level, whether it's a superintendent or a school board attorney, you need to make sure that you have a plan in place, even if you don't have the, the person who's going to be stepping into those shoes immediately there on the next day.
Mr. Fisher?
So, I originally had suggested that term of month-to-month to kind of hit the middle between saying not an auto renewal, and then just her completely going, so it gave us time. I mean, in theory, I don't know, Attorney Quick, I mean, in theory, I guess we could also put in a, a term relating to, you know, three months before the contract ends, we can, you know, set a, a reminder to begin discussions, or something in regards to a future contract or potential.
Ms. Jordan?
I, I think they already have to do that, if I'm not mistaken, where they have to give us notification of, it is time for us to start negotiating for a contract. I believe that's already in either our policy, or one of these, I, and I apologize that I cannot remember what it is, but there is something where the attorney themselves, they have to send that to us to, to make it, make it known. And the, the problem that has, that I've seen that we've done, and I'm part of that, because I, I've been here, is the fact that when that time comes, we, there's an excuse why we don't make it happen. And so, it never happened, so that's why it auto-renewed. So, we just have to, you know, really do our due diligence, and make sure that we are doing our jobs, and making sure that we are taking care of this, so the auto-renew would not even matter, because we would already have had that discussion, we would have already decided what was going to take place, so that would eliminate, even though it's, it may say auto-renew, it would never be, because we would already have done our jobs, and have decided what we were going to do, if that makes sense, what I just said. Okay.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Well, and how do you make an employee stay after they want to leave? I mean, that's what you're really ultimately asking someone to do. I think, you know, a 60-day notice, or maybe even a 90-day notice, would be something, I think that's what Ms. Jordan's mentioning, since we're, we're only meeting once a month, 60-day, that's only two times to get it, to get it done, and I don't, we're not able to do that. So, unless we're going to put in there that we'll have, you know, our policy, that we're going to have a, you know, a special meeting for that, you know, or something, we got to make sure we get it done. So, that would, that would be my concern, and, you know, the auto-renew has made it easy for us not to do anything, and that's what's happened. I understand why the month-to-month, but I just don't know how you make employees stay when they want to, when they want to leave. And you've agreed upon it, I think that's another contract at that point, to even get 60 days or 30 days out of somebody. You know, we have enough legal, a legal team now, that I think we could have an interim fairly quickly, so that, there's that too. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding this part of the contract? Ms. Jordan?
I'm just going to, I'm just going to put it out there again, I think that the auto-renew should stay there, and we just need to make sure that we are doing our job to make sure that we don't have to worry about the auto-renew, because we have already had that conversation, and I know we've discussed about having special meetings, which I've never seen yet, since we lost those meetings, so I, I'm not going to bank on that, I just know that we need to make sure that we, that we really adhere to making this happen, and the month-to-month, if I, if you're telling me a month-to-month, and I have this big lawsuit, am I going to worry? I am really not going to be stressing over that. So, I think that their focus is not going to be there, as far as the attorney. For us, even though we have other attorneys, which I appreciate each and every one of you, but I believe that we have to have, that person needs to be there, and the month-to-month is, it's, it's too shaky for me.
Mr. Fisher?
I will object to the auto-renew.
Mr. Persens?
We did our job, then the auto-renew works. And I know as long as I'm on the board, we're going to do our job, we'll be doing this well in advance next time. You know, we almost, want to seem like we wanted to brush it off again tonight, and I'm not going to let that happen. We, we need to step up and get these things done when we're supposed to get them done. And you, you need that, as Ms. Jordan said, you need that security, that you're going to keep your staff there if possible, unless they're doing a bad job. And we've already said, if they're doing a bad job, you only need a majority now, not a supermajority. So, that, that's your way out. But if they're doing a good job, I want to keep that person, I want to work with them. And I think, I know we dropped the ball, I, I don't want to blame the attorney, but maybe she dropped the ball a little bit too, by relying on that. We just need to all get together and, and get it done next time. And we're going to be doing the same thing with our board auditor, same kind of contract. And I know the, a lot of these provisions in here will, should apply also to the new attorney for the superintendent, you know, so. I, I'm more for that. I'm, I would not vote against the contract if it's not in there, one way or the other, but I, I think it should be in there.
Ms., Mr. Fisher, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, again, on the auto-renew, and I agree with you, Mr. Persens, but we've had our job, the contract's not up until April 2026, so I know that keeps getting put out there, but we've done our job, there was apparently at that time, no disagreement from either side, so we're still on that. I just don't like the, as I said, as, again, a governmental policy standpoint, I don't, do we have any other employee in this district that has an auto-renew? Not that I'm aware of. And again, we'll say as, you know, the, our employee, but I, just from a governmental philosophy standpoint, I don't think we should have an auto-renew. And I agree, we can get the job done, we can get another contract done, you know, I hope we continue with the board attorney for that, so, but that's my thoughts on it.
Ms. Giavennelli?
So, clarity, on the red line, it's stay, staying in or out? Because it sounds like to me, majority wants to keep it in, the auto-renew, and.
Well, I was waiting for you to talk, because I was, wanted to see, because I don't have clarification on that point. It seems to me that the month-to-month, there's, there's consensus, at least from, that we've heard from, to take it out, but the auto-renew, I, I haven't heard a majority say, yes, we want to keep the auto-renew, or no, we need to remove it. So, yeah, I need clarification on that.
So, I'm going to, I'll just, I'll piggyback off of what Mr. Fisher said, in my opinion, I mean, I've, in, in every job I've had, an auto-renew, in my experience, the employee loses a sense of accountability. I mean, that, they know that auto-renew is coming up, and if there's no discussion, and there could be different people here at the dais when that happens. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I've really never been in favor of an, just an automatic renewal of a contract, and it has nothing to do with this board attorney. That's just my philosophy in the business I've owned, working in corporate, being an educator, I just, there's a lot of, I don't know, potential issues that could come with an auto-renew. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to second that position, in coming out of corporate and having the business hat. Again, there's nothing against our attorney for that, but to auto-renew any agreement, again, we turn every four years, there's new people to lock someone in, into that. It, it doesn't make sense to me, again, if we're doing our due diligence, and following the timeline that we're supposed to follow, and having the right conversations, it shouldn't be needed, so I'm not in support of it.
Ms. Jordan?
The auto, and I, I am one who hates auto-renewals, like, I don't, in my life, I don't even do this for my bills, I just hate it. However, I know that if I don't have an auto-renewal for cable, whatever, it's going to be shut down. If we don't have, so I make sure that I pay attention to that, but I, the problem is, if we do not have this, to me, it's, I'm looking at this as a protection, regardless of who the board attorney is or not, if we don't have this, and again, we waited, because we had a new board, so we did not do our jobs, because we wanted to have insight from other people coming on, so that's how this went, moved on. How many times are we going to have that happen? And then, if we don't have it, okay, today is April whatever, she's gone, don't worry, we'll pick up the phone and get the next attorney here. It doesn't work that way. So, that is my problem with that. And yes, we can, we have conflict attorney, which we have used, Mr. Quick, which appreciate you, you did a great job, however, it's that our own person, the person who knows the district, who understands that, that's my worry about that, and I think that we don't have to worry about it being renewed if we are doing our jobs. So, they're going to have to, they're going to have to continue doing their job, because there's no guarantee that, that it's going to come up, we're going to make sure that we, that we're there with a new contract.
Mr. Fisher?
Well, I appreciate that argument, I mean, God forbid, if we don't have no attorney, we have other attorneys on staff, it'd be like a superintendent, we, we would figure out an attorney, we don't want to get to that point, you know, there's outside counsel, whatever, we would never get to that point, we would have been a pretty terrible place as an organization, if we did not have a single person representing us on the board at that point, so. And again, for an auto-renew, you can argue some of these points, or the reason why we, why we're here right now, is the auto-renew was part of it, is some of this conversation came up. So, again, like superintendent leaves, you, you get another one. I don't want our board attorney to leave, but in a doomsday scenario, there are other attorneys, or other resources, it's not like the district is going to be just stuck, as I said, one person leaves, and we just completely fall apart, not saying to devalue the, the meaning of what this board attorney does individually, I'm just saying this, the organization's bigger than all of us as a whole.
Mr. Rivel?
Yeah, I'm going to go along with this one, with the, with the, with the reasoning on the auto, I've never heard of auto-renewal in all my years of being in business. I mean, it forces us to, to stand up, negotiate in good faith, and get the thing done. And if you, and you see what happens in corporate America, if you don't do that, you have a strike. So, that's how the process works. So, I'd have to go along with, with the reasoning on not, not having the auto-renew. I think we have to, it forces us to do what we're supposed to do in the first place.
Mr. Persens?
Mr. Quick, what are, what is the standard in the other districts as far as attorneys' renewals, and things like that? Do any of them have an auto-renewal, or not, or?
Yeah, I don't know all of them, but, and, and obviously, some use outside counsel, some has, have inside. I am aware that it is fairly common practice to have either one. So, the, yes, there are plenty of school board attorneys within this state that have an auto-renewal, that same thing would go for unelected supers, and then if you were to go outside of school districts, and into other governmental entities with cities and counties, it's the same. It, 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 it runs the gamut, they, but it, it's out there, yes, they, there are definitely a number that have it, yes.
So, it's not uncommon?
Exactly, it's not uncommon.
That's, I just wanted to make sure we weren't considering something.
Ms. Giavennelli?
So, then I have to ask a question, is it a deal breaker, breaker for Attorney Bruno, the auto-renew?
I don't know right now, so.
I would, I.
I know she was pushing for it, but I, I don't know, depending on what the entire deal looks like, and then maybe we might have to take a break, I, I don't know, if you, you know, and I can always talk with her once we get through everything.
I, I will go with consensus, I think on the board, I'm, you know, but, I mean, I do want to know what, if that's a deal breaker for her, like, I, I need to know that.
Okay. Yeah, that one, I'm not sure about, there are other ones I am aware of, whether they are or not, and I, but that one, I'm not sure if it's a deal breaker.
So, out of respect of time, can we, I mean, I think you've got a pretty good idea, okay.
Yeah, I understand where, where the board would like to go on that, so. Yeah, I understand where the board would like to go on that. So five and six, they're both salary related, so I'll mention them, but we and you can take them up either separately or together. The number five was the automatic increase with the to be consistent with administrative support staff or administrative staff. And then number five was an increase in salary up to 212,000 with it being retroactive to April 27 of 2025. I don't know the import of that date, but that was the the date that it was requested. I would say I looked into because some of you did ask me, do others have these auto increases in them within the district? And it looks like, yes, there are other staff members. And obviously, your your support staff would be governed by by a policy that does have auto increases in them. So that is something to answer. A number of you asked me that question, and some of you I was able to speak with others, I wasn't about that as a follow up. That does exist within the district, yes, definitely.
Mr. Quick, can I ask, when it comes to the actual number, the actual salary number that's been suggested, we when we are comparing other districts that are our size, how I mean, how is that an average? Is that a comparable amount?
So I did because you did ask me that, and I did look at that. Some of them have used law firms, so I couldn't do a one to one comparison. Obviously, they're getting paid, well, I don't know if they have a retainer or hourly, but they law firm. So in in Polk County, which is slightly larger than Lee, it was 215,000 a year, and that agreement was in 2023. In Brevard, it was 170,000 a year. That was in 2022. I was able to actually, the school board member, Chaviano, was had a copy of that. I was able to look at that did have auto increases in it. So calculating that out, that would be about 191,000 if if they just followed only the auto, the auto increases there. That those auto increases were based upon were not tied to staff increases, though it was tied to performance increases. And then Osceola, this was a 2023 contract, was 200,000. So it's in terms of districts of this size, obviously, Brevard and Osceola are smaller, but the other ones in between had law firms, so I couldn't really do an apples to apples comparison. It's, you know, it's it's within the the range.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this item? Mr. Fisher.
I do not agree with the retro. Outside of that, I'm open to suggestion.
I actually agree. I already had this conversation, Mr. Quick. So Mr. Fisher and then Mr. Ribble.
One last thing I forgot to put on was I was also going to request, depending on what we do with sal, if there is any kind of auto increases, I would ask for a term in the contract that states the board attorney shall not make more than elected superintendent.
Mr. Ribble.
I agree with both both Ms. Fisher's comments.
Mr. Persons.
The way I understood it is our board superintendent would always make more than any other employee. That's what we agreed to on this dais when we were setting the salary for the superintendent. She would be the highest paid. Might only be a dollar more than whoever, but I mean, with the some of the bumps that will come up with like the deputy superintendent and some others, they're getting close to that. I know we also get an auto raise unless the beginning teachers get absolutely no raise, even as board members. So this would be the only, to my knowledge, the only employee of the whole district not getting an auto raise, unless I'm looking at it wrong, you know, because superintendent goes up if everybody else goes up and we go up and all the other employees go up. So I just think we should keep the auto raise in there.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to that. But again, the superintendent through us sets what the salary schedule is for the administrator, so that's a little bit different. They conceivably have no salary schedule increase. I just wanted to ask through the chair to Mr. Quick, for the record, what is our current board attorney's salary to this date?
At least on the contract I have, and it was 211, 211,650. I don't know if there has been any adjustment from what was in that document.
Current number, I meant, not.
Oh, that she's asking.
Yes, no, no, no. What is her current salary on this date?
Oh, yeah, that's what I at least that's what's in this document is 211,650. She's asking to go to 212,000. That's as I understand it. And I spoke with her to get clarification as to what the amount was that she's asking because it was it was a little inconsistent when I was looking into it. There were some notes about 221, but I did clarify with her, and it's she's seeking to go to 212.
Mr. Fisher, do you have a follow up?
Yeah, I was just I thought it was, can we just confirm 100% of what her current salary is?
Yes.
Right now?
Okay, I don't. Okay, so she just texted me, it's 194,600.
Yeah, that's I thought it was 194. Okay, that's why I was.
And I apologize for that. It does, for whatever reason, on page three, it talks about the salary being 211,650. So I'm not sure why it says that because it's not as a red line, so I just assumed that was the the current one. So apologies.
I I agree with I'm fine with the raise and I'm fine. I'm fine with the the increase in raise. However, I think that's a great idea, Mr. Fisher, to not exceed the superintendent. Superintendent, Dr. Carlin, how many employees do you have?
Approximately 13,000 employees.
So, I mean, and she has seven. So I think that's a fair statement that her her income should never supersede the superintendent.
So it sounds to me like like at least the majority is okay with the increase to 212 and the the okay with the automatic increase with the proviso that there's language included that says so long that she cannot exceed the salary of the elected superintendent.
Sure. I think we already have said that in the past, but that's fine with me.
Ms. Giavonelli.
Okay, so I would agree. And so I have to go back to Mr. Fisher. He doesn't want retro. And I'm I actually, I'm leaning, I agree with that because, I mean, right now, we're still in bargaining for the teachers. And once that is done, then she'll get a raise at that point in time, another bump. So I that's really important. And the Evergreen study showed that she's behind. So that is, I think that's where she became came up with the 212, just because of the Evergreen study that we had where everyone was underpaid. So so, okay, so I'm good. I just don't think retro at this point, that would be where I would go. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
Okay, so I am maybe I'm just a little bit confused here. So if the bump would not happen until next year, not this year, correct? Because if we were to give that raise now, that raise has already been given, so that the 3% or whatever that is, cost of living, would not take place until 2026, correct? Am I mistaken on that?
Ms. Chaviano.
So just so I could, just so maybe I'm clear, and maybe I'll jump off with Ms. Jordan's. I know we're still in collective bargaining. That's until the 19th. That has not been decided. Whatever we agree upon now, should this be effective today? The pay that we decide today plus whatever happens at that point, she would get another increment once that bargaining is reached with Talc. So she would get the the pay bump now, and then whatever is decided once Talc reaches their agreement and collective bargaining on the 19th.
Just to clarify, I just I want to jump in for a moment. It's always been my assumption that we go along with admin raises, not the not the contractual employees. But I would just want to clarify with the contract language is the increase commensurate with when Talc or Spalc conclude. It's always been my understanding, it's been administrative raises, but let me just clarify.
Says, it currently says other administrative personnel.
Yeah.
Do you have your direction on what your or do you need us to clarify?
Well, I need clarification on retro, whether you want to do it retroactive to April 27 to 2025. I've heard it looks like three said no to retro, and I'm seeing two other head shaking no. So the majority are saying no to retro. And then and then you all are okay with the the auto increase then being included? Okay, got it.
Mr. Fisher.
As long as it has the clause that shall not make more than the current elected superintendent.
Yes, exactly. Yes. So then the last item is the severance, and that has to do with the current severance. It's whether the severance is going to be, and again, there's been some varying opinions on this that are not necessarily also just reflected in the the what's drafted. But the the initial call that I made to you was, are you looking for 20, you know, Kathy's looking to have 20 week severance, which again is is you can't go past that. So it'll be anything between zero and 20. And then the the current proposal from the school board has been what I'll call up to 20 weeks. So if there's a provision in there that says if she obtains gainful employment, that then it'll be reduced based upon the number of weeks that that she has that gainful employment. So I think there's an example put in if after 10 weeks she gets gainful employment, then you would reduce the 10 weeks. So I see that hand raised.
Mr. Persons.
Yeah. I know that's what we did with the superintendent's severance. I do want to make a point for the public who's can be listening in on this. That is severance for dismissal without cause.
Yes.
If she's does something wrong and is dismissed, there's no severance.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just want to make that clarification there so people can understand. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, I would support up to 20 weeks, but not automatic 20 weeks. Just follow per statute.
And I echo. Thank you.
And you said that's in the super's current contract that you have?
Our past.
The past one, yeah, sorry.
Past one, we gave up to 20 weeks, but he got employment, so we're able to stop it sooner.
For Dr. Bernier. Okay, I'm just I just mentioned that because then if there's already language that you all are comfortable with and that there's been a board policy, I can look to that language and and, you know, not, you know, try to reuse that language as we can because it's already been something that's established as a policy for the board. So.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
I think that the what was written here was pulled out of Dr. B's contract. So that 20, 20 weeks, I believe, is the same verbiage that was in his that's in this one right here. And I still I'm so sorry that I just want to go back. So if we say 212, we're saying 212, and then a month from now, two months from now, then it's 212 plus another bump? That's where I'm thinking. That's why I was saying is, does that not take effect in the next year because this is what we're doing now?
I'd have to ask Dr. Carlin as to when the other personnel would get their raises, and I think she could clarify when that timeframe would be.
Yes. Right. So typically, if tradition follows, and again, you know, I'm nine months in now, so right, we'll obviously, we'll take a look at this. But if tradition follows, typically, we have settled our contracts first with our Spalc and our Talc folks. Once that has been established, then the determination is what will the administrative salary be? I've seen it played two ways. I've seen it retroactive, and I've seen it go forward. So again, we would need to look at the money, make sure we've got the money in the bank, right, before we make that decision. So and I think that's why it's been attached to what we do with administrators is what we've done typically with our contractual folks.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. And any financial term in this contract, I would not support any retroactivity. I would also, let's see, other question on that, the retroactivity and I forgot, come back to me.
Mr. Persons.
Yeah. No, we have reclassified several administrators in the last few months with salary increases. And I would assume that they would be getting the administrative increase, and I think they deserve it, you know, so I don't see any difference here.
Mr. Fisher.
Sorry about that. Too many things on my mind. I was thinking about also, remember, Chaviano had mentioned this, but, you know, I don't know, Attorney Quick, when do we want this contract to take effect? I don't know if Attorney Dupree Bruno has talked about that. When do we actually want to go ahead on that, depending if we agree on this?
Yeah, and so I that I haven't gotten to that because we were, you know, I hadn't gotten to the to the effective date. I mean, honestly, you could, if you approved it today, it could be effective today and everything moves forward. And I assume I would have to look to Kathy. I assume that's what she would be probably looking for, that if you've got the agreement, let's let's start it today. I'm hearing from the 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 school board here that the majority do not want retroactive. So in that case, I would not make an effective date passed because then that would mean you'd be in effect creating retroactive salary increase without having that language in there. So I would just recommend if you're going to renegotiate and approve it, I just I'd recommend you guys have it be effective the day that the day that you approve it.
Thank you. Okay, so was that all? Did we hit all of the seven major?
From my perspective, I mean, if I can go through them all if you'd like again, or if you all are comfortable, I'm happy to do.
I think we just need to circle back to the first part of the contract. I think you have your direction for the rest of the contract. Could you reread the red line to that first?
The one about the?
With the staff.
Yeah, the red line. So there were two parts. It was at the under employment relationship and title, there was a proposed language being stricken that says Dupree Bruno shall serve as the chief legal officer for the school district. And then there was another provision a little later in that paragraph that says the board shall provide Dupree Bruno with adequate office space, assistant school board attorneys, legal administrative and or paralegal assistance, telephone service, email service, legal publications and office supplies necessary for the maintenance of an attorney's office at the district administrative building presently located at 2855 Colonial Boulevard, Fort Myers, Florida 33966. And I was saying, then one recommendation that I did have, and I don't have the language for, but I can can craft some, and honestly, if if we're in agreement on the other terms, I'm I'm not sweating whether or not this this would be a holdup. But I do think it would probably behoove you all to include, since you do now have the setup with where the Dr. Carlin has her own attorney, that it would probably, I would recommend, and I think it would be prudent to include that distinction there so that it's in, if you're including this language, I think you should also include that in there. And again, if I we can come up with some language, I'm not, if we reached agreement on the other terms, I'm not sweating that language too much.
Mr. Persons.
Yeah, I'd like to see something there where it defines the clients of the attorney, like the the number one first attorney client is to the school board where they're her client, and the second one is the district is the client.
Yeah, that's how I was envisioning.
Something along those lines, I think, is what you were alluding to.
Exactly. That's what I was envisioning.
Mr. Ribble.
Yeah, can we take a 10 minute break and perhaps Mr. Quick could talk to our our attorney to see if we're close or? It'd be nice to know where she's where she's at on this.
Okay, I think that, let me finish. Dr. Carlin, you wanted to?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to a comment that was just made. Again, just for a point of clarification, with the chief staff attorney, it is an advisor to the superintendent and district staff on all legal matters. So they're not the chief legal counsel for the entire district. But I want to make it clear, it's not my own personal attorney. It's very important that that is an advisor to the superintendent district staff. And then just a point of clarification, more of a legal question, can an attorney serve more than one client? For example, serve the board and serve the district because I'm the CEO of the district. So I just want to make sure that we have clear lines of delineation in terms of who is the client. And the reason I bring that up is, again, not because of this situation, take Denise and Kathy out of it. If there's an elected superintendent and there comes to a point where there is a disagreement, who is this attorney serving? Who is the client? I just want clarity on when there's a conflict, how that works, and do you represent both the district and the and the staff?
Yeah, so.
As a client.
Yeah, so you if there's, so as I understand it, there in this scenario, there's a potential disagreement between the elected superintendent and the board. So the way I understand your current setup, I'll have to double check your policies, is that your school board attorney would represent. that your school board attorney would represent the board and, and I guess really the district, but then the, the attorney for the superintendent would be representing the superintendent's interests. It, it's, it's a little fuzzy because obviously you oversee the district staff, but the school board governs the district. So that's why it's, it's a little fuzzy to say, but, but the, your board attorney generally, unless you have a different setup, would be representing the, the board and the entity and then the, the, I'm not sure what the term is, the, the chief, chief staff attorney would be representing the superintendent in whatever the dispute is. And that, that's how I've seen it around the state as well. That's, that's a fairly common setup when you have this type of scenario.
Okay, so my only request would just be in the, in the language, just so there's, there's clarity, because I know it is a fuzzy area, just to make sure, because I know there's a whole body of law about conflicts as it pertains to clients. So I just would like go on the record as making sure that we're real clear how that language would read, because I don't, you know, again, take Denise and Kathy out of it, this is for 10 years from now, I don't want there to be any ambiguous language and I know the attorney won't do that, but just to be very clear on who is the client. I, I think that's going to be essential.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. I'm going to renew my objection for what goes into item number one. I would ask that the named position be board attorney and the rest be left up to our board policy. Thank you.
Ms. Chaviano?
Just one more point of clarification, on the red line, on page two, in the first paragraph, it states Dupree Bruno's title shall be school board attorney and general counsel for the school board. And that's not a red line, so.
Yeah, I think, I, I still think you need to, I'm, I'm trying to find exactly where you're reading it, but I still think you need to clarify because that, this was created before you had this current structure. So I want to make sure that whatever, if it's included, that your document reflects what your current structure is and that's way, that way it's clear, because this was, this was, this was after the last time you had a, a, you know, a staff attorney and, but now, you know, you, you were without it and now you're, you have a chief staff attorney, slightly different, but, but roughly similar setup. I want to make sure that your contract, if you're going to include it, it recognizes those, those roles so that it, it's clear in there as to who serves what role and that, and that's what my goal was in recommending that.
Anything else, Ms. Chaviano? Okay, um, so I would like to recommend that we take a five minute recess to test the temperature of where the board attorney is at, then reconvene, because I know we have some really other, some, some very important things on our workshop this afternoon that have not, that, that we still have a ways to go. And I know that the goal here is to have this contract at tonight's board meeting. So we, it's 2:49, we will, um, let's come back at, let's come back at?
3:55?
3:55, excuse me. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon. The time is 3:03 PM. Out of respect for time and efficiency, we're going to continue on with our meeting agenda. We are going to ask for Dr. Cupid McCoy, our Chief Strategy Officer, to present to us with the District Advisory Committee topics. Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Madam Chair, real quick, can I ask a question through you to the Superintendent?
Yes.
Madam Superintendent, could you, your staff, find out with the salary increase, was it seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars up to new, what would be the total fiscal impact for the district? I just want to know what that would be if we're to vote on it tonight, as long as the Board doesn't object to that question.
Thank you.
So I did ask the information from our CFO and the total fiscal impact, as I'm reading it, to include salary amount, the increase at the end, purchase of vacation time, retirement investment account, that total would be two hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. And then to counter, or to include, Board Attorney as Senior Management Service Class for the purpose of FRS, Social Security and Health, the same as other employees, and health and life insurance, that would be a total amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and four dollars.
And can we figure out what then the difference would be between current and that?
Yes, absolutely. We'll be able to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, go ahead. Dr. Cupid McCoy, welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Board and Superintendent. This afternoon, I'd like to share with you three proposed topics for DAC beginning this school year. The first meeting for DAC will be held in the month of September, and our current structure is through a virtual platform, so we use Microsoft Teams, and our meetings typically run from six to seven PM. The three topics for the first half of the year are parent engagement, which will be supported by the Strategy Division. We want to continue to work that we've started in working through some of the recommendations from the task force. Then in November, we will partner with the Human Resources Department and focus on our retention efforts through Project Thrive. And when we return in January after the winter break, the third topic will be the Code of Conduct facilitated by Academic Services. This allows our community to be true thought partners with us around these three specific topics. As it relates to the first meeting in September, on September seventeenth, that meeting is dedicated to presentation of sunshine and understanding what DAC is all about. It encompasses denominations for Chair and Vice Chair. And really, at that meeting, we also have to vote on the platform for the remainder of the year, as well as the proposed dates that we have for the remainder of the year. Additionally, at that first meeting, we will select three members for the Transportation Committee, a representative from elementary, middle, and high. Additionally, we will select two elementary representatives, two middle, and two high school representatives for the site selection committee. Madam Chair, Superintendent, that is all that I have. Thank you.
Board, any comments or questions? Ms. Giavennelli?
Yes. Can you refresh my memory, as well as for the public, how many DAC members there are from each school, you know, and then who selects them, and is that policy that drives that, or is it a law? And that might be a question also for the attorney.
Each school has a primary DAC representative, as well as an alternate. At a DAC meeting, the representative is the voting member. The alternate only votes if that representative is absent. As it relates to who makes that determination, I'd need to confirm that and get back to you. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Dr. Cupid McCoy, can you please tell me, for the site selection, you just mentioned six individuals. Based on ninety-one forty, our policy, is that what we're supposed to have? I thought there were, that we should have other people from the community as well. Because I know that they, we pulled them out of, this is something that was part of EDAC that no longer exists, so that was part of that committee. So I just, I thought that there were more people on there versus just the six individuals, and that it stated something about the, and I apologize, I should have looked it up before coming here.
Those six individuals are the representative from DAC. Those six individuals do not constitute the entire site selection committee.
So the six individuals are plus the others that we had originally selected from EDAC before it went away?
What, Madam Jordan, I'd like to do some additional legwork and get back to you.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to make sure we have the amount that we need per our policy. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Cupid McCoy? Okay, excellent. Thank you. We are going to continue to move on. We have a safety update with Dave Newlin. He is Chief Safety, Security, and Fleet Operations.
Good afternoon, Board members. Dave Newlin for the record. Good afternoon, our Superintendent Denise Carlin, and Board Attorney for today Corey Huffman. This is our safety update. So basically, well, this is a return from probably back in May. I brought forward some data talking about the comparison, or would there be a comparison? We first brought forward Open Gate in 2023, looking for the correlation, would it affect activity at our schools for law enforcement, meaning, you know, our number of arrests, civil citations, notes to appear. When I came to you in May, I had half the data, so I had, I compared half that out of 2024 versus half the year of 23. Now I'm back to you now with a full year comparison for both years. So overall comparison for 2023, there was over one thousand two hundred and twenty-six, and that means a combination of, again, arrests, civil citations, notes to appear, with a combined of 2024 of nine hundred and thirty-four incidents of those same three, which is a twenty-seven percent decrease in comparison to 2023. For Lee County Sheriff's Office, just them specifically, that agency, there was five hundred and ninety-six, again, a combination of arrests, civil citations, notes to appear, and compared to 2024, four ninety-one, which again is a nineteen percent decrease in this current, this past year. And then for Fort Myers Police Department, as you look at the number comparison for a year-to-year comparison of 2023 at one fifty-six, to one forty-three in 2024, a nine percent decrease. And then for Cape Coral, you'll see a four hundred and seventy-four, as far as the total of three different types, again, arrests, notes to appear, and civil citation. The 2024 was a forty-five percent decrease in overall activity from year-to-year comparison. This is another way of looking at it from our chart, basically in comparison each, all three agencies with an overall of the 23, 24 year. Again, just looking at the data, again, the curiosity of, does it have a correlation? It may be more than just Open Gate, but again, as we move forward, these are things we will continue to look at as far as safety goes, as we implement new measures, training, other things in our schools, how it will affect overall, not just by facts, but also by how people feel as well, the feeling of feeling safety. And that's part of a BBS surveys as well. Another way to look at this, too, looking at police activity for all three agencies and year-to-year, you can see those in red show that those numbers are always higher in 2023, except for, there was one that was in Fort Myers Police Department. They had a little more civil citations in 24 compared to 23, but looking at the, going down into the data that I have pulled for each agency, it was nothing, a lot of these were less serious offenses, could be more maybe tobacco violation, stuff like that. So it wasn't anything serious. The one thing I will share with you, looking at the data, too, and it's not on here, but I did pull the notes, just looking at, looking at weapon charges, for example, in 2023 to 2024, I can tell you there was a fifty percent drop and decrease in 23 versus 24, which I thought was a pretty big difference. And weapon could be anything, not just firearm, but could, again, when I say weapon, it could be a lot of things. Could be a knife, box cutter, or anything, again, anything like that, that can be construed as a weapon. So that was, I thought was a big difference. And that was pretty much it. Again, as I move forward, we'll continue to bring things forward as well, like this to compare, not just this, but, and continue to measure it as well, Open Gates move forward as well, other events, after-school events as well, but other things we introduce into the schools to see how it will affect safety as that comparison.
Thank you. Dr. Carlin, do you have anything?
Appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Newlin, as always.
Thank you.
Board members, any comments or questions for Mr. Newlin this afternoon? Ms. Jordan?
I just want to say thank you as well, and they showed this on TV last, on the news last night.
Oh.
And they interviewed parents, and you could see the positive out there, so I just really want to thank you and appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Thank you. So, thank you for this. I think safety is so important, right? But I, when I go to school board conferences, it's hard for me to, so many people haven't gone to the Open Gate, or they have nothing still. Like, I'm just shocked over that. Like, this day and age, I mean, safety is like number one for, should be for any school board, so, or district, you know what I'm saying? So I just think, thank you for the numbers. It's, it puts it all in perspective. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say, we've had numerous districts come down here to really see how we've implemented Open Gate, especially in all of our schools, in all of our, any entrance that a student or a public would come in, so just see how that worked out, how do we implement that whole plan moving forward.
Yeah, I agree. I think Open Gate has been a game changer. If nothing else, it's a deterrent. It's not the perfect solution. Nothing is solid, you know, full proof, like a hundred percent proof, but my, just because I went to so many of our outside sporting events, and, you know, I'm always advocating for athletes, it's just something that I have continued to sort of witness is, as the season goes on, we get a little looser in our, maybe paying, you know, maybe paying attention, making sure every single person is going through the Open Gate, not going around it. What are we bringing into games? Whether it be a football game, a baseball game, a soccer game. It says outside facilities that I think worry me more than even the inside sometimes. And some of our, you know, some of our schools are subject, they're, they're in neighborhoods with, with, you know, chain-linked fences that are the only thing to protect them from, you know, a baseball game being played by a major traffic road. So that's the only, I'd love to see that, the safety team sort of focus on that this year.
Okay.
But I, I don't know if you want to comment on our outdoor facility?
Well, we did have actually a discussion yesterday with our athletic director and with Ed Matthews as well, talking about, just going over the concept, talking about, you know, what's in place now, where after-school events, talking about what we can put in place for consistency, strategy, stuff like that. So we are having conversations. We'll be meeting with, all of us coming up very soon, talking about having more discussion, getting something really on, as a process, and having that, you know, kind of answering questions about what to do. We talked to law enforcement as well, getting them on board, too, as part of how to react, something was to happen, moving forward.
And I'm sure that you all are talking with our communications and media team, because I think a big frustration for, like, our gate, our legit, true gatekeepers is, you know, people don't realize that this is a protocol, especially, you know, our incoming freshmen, their families have no idea that this is something that we're doing at our football games or whatnot. And I just think it's important that we continue to blast out, like, please expect, please, you know, don't worry, this is for your, you know, for your kids' utmost safety. So as long as we keep that transparency and communication live, I think that people will most, most of the time be willing to work and do the right thing.
Yeah, we'll continue to work on that this year.
Yeah. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
You're an asset. Thank you. We're going to move on to our Fort Myers Beach Elementary discussion this afternoon. Dr. Ken Savage, Deputy Superintendent, and Donald Neese, Chief Operations Officer, Warren Wilson, Director of Risk Management and Intel Compliance, Cheryl Neely, our Regional Associate Superintendent of the South Region, will all be presenting to us this afternoon. Is your microphone on?
As I was saying, I think Dr. Savage was going to lead in, but it looks like he stepped out, so if you guys want to kick off, we can jump in.
Carlin, do you want to kick off this discussion? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no worries at all. Absolutely. Our Deputy Superintendent is busily dealing with the issues of the day. So, you know, it goes with being a very large school district. So first of all, just thank you for the opportunity to have the conversation today. We brought to you a discussion at the June meeting relative to Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. And as you know, we had engaged the services of an outside third party to take a look at the current state of the building, and we brought that report to you for your consideration. Today, our team is going to provide for you momentarily. I know we're trying to intercept the screen here, but we're going to bring to you just some updates on where we're at. There was some information that we believed, coming out of the last conversation, you may have had some questions about, relative to insurance dollars, reimbursement, that type of thing. So we do want to bring that forward. We've also continued to have conversation relative to some possible options and ideas that we are entertaining. And as a reminder, you know, we continue to have these conversations. Our number one job is, yes, we absolutely love our students at Fort Myers Beach Elementary, and I think I speak on behalf of our entire governance team. The opportunity also exists for us to be good fiscal stewards of the taxpayer dollars, and so that's always top of mind as well. So with that in mind, it looks like Dr. Savage has arrived. How was that for some tap dancing until he, until he arrived? So we'll turn it over to Dr. Savage and our fantastic team. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Carlin. Good afternoon, Board members. Attorney Huffman, I really appreciate the opportunity to continue the conversation of Fort Myers Beach Elementary. I'll go ahead and move to the next slide. So today, we're going to talk through five updates before we have the Board conversation. It starts with just kind of the asset maintenance piece, want to give you an update on what has transpired there, and a brief overview of that, as well as over the summer. We want to talk a little bit more in detail about the partnership with Heights Elementary School. As you, Board members, are aware, we moved from the San Carlos site over to the Heights site, so we're going to talk a little bit about what that work has looked like and what the upcoming school year will look like for those faculties, and for those families, and for those students. Then we're going to kind of give an update of the state operations perspective of where we're at now in terms of our state operational aspect. We're going to give an insurance claims update just based on our current standing with various different storms that we've had and kind of the claims in that standpoint. And then last but not least, we'll touch on some of the more innovative options and partnerships that we've been looking into and kind of the why behind that as well. With that said, we'll go ahead and move first to the asset maintenance perspective.
All right. So this slide gives you an easy-to-read visual on how much we've spent on this location since October 2024. As you can see, we've spent just under nine hundred and seventy-five thousand over the last eleven months. From those funds, approximately seven hundred thousand has gone to facility assessments, remediations, as well as moving in storage. Outside of the rough order of magnitude, there are very few reoccurring expenses. We have purchased five dehumidifiers for eighty-seven hundred dollars. We spent ten K for floor reinforcement and vapor barriers, and outside of that, we perform HVAC preventative maintenance in May 2025. And currently, we're conducting weekly checks to monitor for just general condition and humidity levels.
All right. Thank you. As you just heard, Fort Myers Beach Elementary and Heights Elementary have partnered this year. This partnership is here to help reduce the burden on Fort Myers Beach families regarding specifically distance to the school and travel time. Heights Elementary is located just eighteen minutes from Fort Myers Beach, making it more accessible for families. As we move into talking about enrollment, as of Thursday, July 31st, Fort Myers Beach Elementary had an enrollment of thirty-nine students across grades kindergarten through fifth grade. Currently, four grade levels have four fewer students, fewer than ten students, while first grade has ten students and fourth grade has eleven. Principals Baxa and Palo of Fort Myers Beach Elementary and Heights Elementary are working together to share resources this upcoming year. This will create a positive and supportive experience for students of Fort Myers Beach Elementary. They will explore the possibilities, when I say they, the principals will explore possibilities of sharing staff and to provide a more traditional option for any students or grade levels that have low enrollment. If that opportunity to share staff happens to arise, the principals will work together to communicate with their staffs respectively and their families to ensure that there's a transparent decision-making in those particular areas. Moving forward, all communication regarding the Fort Myers Beach campus itself will go through the updates from Principal Baxa. There will be a specific section that's going to be dedicated to outline any ongoing work that might be taking place throughout the course of this year. Thank you.
Moving into the state operations side, we, as you are aware, at the prior meeting, we went over a report that we had engaged a third-party consultant to do a complete analysis and start to produce kind of some understanding of where do you go from here, considering lots of different vantage points, considering enrollment, considering the storm recurrence, the damage that's been observed, just all those different feasibility aspects to really kind of put it all together and put into more of the, some traditional options to get us going. One of the things we consider as we go through it is not a very easy thing to do. Obviously, after Hurricane Ian, which just want to make sure we kind of surface for the entire governance team, because obviously we've had some turnover on that team since that time, Ian was an absolutely catastrophic storm that had just in prior storm, uh, that had just in prior, we had not observed that level of destruction on the island, uh, to the magnitude that it was. And so it completely destroyed really those buildings and, and just completely had, it was a game changer in terms of that site. I think the understanding at that time was this is really a, a once in a 50 to 100 year type of event. And because of that, you know, we'll go ahead and build back the building. And so they put in roughly $6 million to get the, uh, historic building up and running, uh, as it was. I don't believe that they anticipated that on the two subsequent storms, that that building would be affected by those subsequent storms as well. Had they anticipated that, I think they may have chosen a different option or considered other options. So really from this, uh, you know, one of our, our big aspects here is we want to model fiscal responsibility. We really want to be wise with taxpayer dollars. And so we have to kind of consider the evidence that we've seen over these last few years, uh, that those storm events, we have to be very careful in what we do on that site and be very strategic, uh, so that we don't continuously find ourselves every storm season with damage. And so that's a big aspect of why we engage a third-party consultant, to give us an understanding of what, what are some good options that could help harden that site, um, from future damage. So we're not continuing to spend, as you've seen already, the amount of maintenance dollars we put in just to keep the asset where it is, is still substantial. And that's excluding all the new construction options and so forth. So if we want to have all the different options available to us, one of the things that is required at the state level is an advanced plan survey. Um, what essentially this relies upon for the district is that the state has a set of criteria that they utilize for all of the school districts. And this is, uh, an attempt for the state to kind of control for some of that stewardship. So essentially what they do is they have a state-defined criteria in this report, uh, that we submit and it utilizes the exact information that they require for their analysis. And essentially what it does is it compares the costs of remodeling and modernizing, uh, building to the cost of replacing it with new construction. So if we want to evaluate options such as building a completely new school, um, maybe at a much higher elevation or any of those other aspects, we require a state report to do that. Uh, and it's detailed, it's comprehensive, and again, it's standardized across the entire state. Everyone must do that. And we've also had to do that numerous times whenever we have facilities where we consider these new options that are brand-new construction. Um, because in some cases, depending on the findings of that report, the state can either say no, you have to continue to work within just that existing building footprint, or yes, it makes good sense to completely go in a different direction. Uh, so we have engaged that same third-party consultant that did all the extra work. Um, we're going to allow them to continue to, to utilize the state criteria because you have to, it has to conform to the state expectations. And when they are completed with that report, we submit it to the state via our planning office, uh, and then they give us a review to determine what options we really have available to us based on that review. And so we'll have a chance for questions and comment after we get to the next areas.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Warren Wilson, Risk Manager. Uh, the next slide is on the insurance claims update. Uh, most of you are familiar with the dashboard. It's a much more detailed document. I can send that to you. I thought this would be much more useful to you, especially as talking points if you're working with your constituents. Uh, the recovery is going forward. We've recovered 70.5 million for our wind policy. We're only 4.5 million dollars remaining on the outstanding insurance claim. We received the 5.75 million for flood, the 55 million dollar LAP from the state, 12.38 from FEMA. I'll stop here for a moment. If anyone asks you how much money we received from FEMA, it's 12.38 million dollars. That's it. Uh, going forward, 17.5, uh, million from, uh, the state for infra- infrastructure and 1.2 million from the county to reimburse us for the shelters. That, uh, the total is 162 million 38. Uh, the rough order of magnitude from the storm is north of 250 million dollars. So you can do the simple math of looking at that 162 million dollar figure and see what the shortfall is. Currently, we're in a dispute with FEMA under our applications for recovery. Uh, they're disputing some $30,000 in deductibles. They don't recognize our deductibles. $20 million difference on the Hector Cafaretta permanent structure, 7.5 million for the Hector Cafaretta temporary structure, and other 5 million, uh, not acknowledging that converting, uh, composite roofs to metal roofs is actually something called mitigation. So you can see we have a discrepancy with FEMA of some 7, 62 million dollars. Let's focus on Fort Myers Beach Elementary School because I know folks, uh, are focusing on this particular campus. The damage to the entire campus from Ian was some 20 million dollars. The grand total of insurance we received from the wind and flood policies is 6 million dollars. You can see the difference there. The cost to rebuild the historic building alone after Ian was 6 million dollars. Please be mindful that the rebuild cost was not tied to the amount of insurance that we received. It's just coincidence. The maximum flood insurance policy limit is available from FEMA is 500,000 dollars. That is the most amount of flood insurance that you can get for any single building. We received 414,000 dollars under that policy for Hurricane Milton flood damage. The reason why there's a small difference between the limit is because it's paid at actual cash value, not replacement cost. There are exclusions and it's only tied to repairs. That's why when you see that dollar amount, uh, that the CEO presented earlier, the 974,600, 600,000 figure, if we subtract the insurance that we had from that, the 414,000, we're still 560,000 dollars upside down with just maintaining this particular property. Uh, we also even had damage from Hurricane Helene, not covered by insurance, paid for by district proceeds, 32,75. I want the district, uh, folks to be mindful that this 162 million dollars that we received, while it sounds like a tremendous amount of money, that's from all sources, from every campus, all our 94 schools, our 1,072 buildings to support 88,000 students. That's to give us some perspective about how large the loss was. And even though we are working diligently to try and recover as much as we can, there are no guarantees that we will receive any additional funding from FEMA. And we will be moving forward with the forgiveness program for the LAP funding because that LAP funding money from the state, from, from our state legislature is in the form of a loan. So we have to, we will proceed going forward with moving towards the forgiveness of that 55 million dollars.
All right. And, uh, last but not least, uh, basically, we wanted to kind of highlight some of the other aspects that have been continuing. So first off, uh, we've just had excellent engagement with our municipal partner. Uh, in this case, it's, it's town of Fort Myers Beach. Uh, just really thrilled. Uh, we actually have the mayor is, uh, is present even today, uh, is engaged with, uh, you all as other electeds, but we've even had a lot of engagement with the staff as well, the town manager, as well as the deputy town manager. Um, I think it's really important that we keep a line of dialogue going, uh, just because we understand as the, as the town is in its recovery, uh, that this is obviously a really high priority for them. And so we want to keep that open line of dialogue, uh, as well as something that has now come to the, you know, conversation really more or less is this dialogue around a potential charter model. Um, the charter model, just want to kind of highlight what some of the benefits are for why, uh, this wasn't really something we contemplated in our initial report, but it's something that we're bringing up here, um, and, and we've continued to explore. And there's a, a few reasons why, uh, there are some advantages of the charter. First, there are charter statutes operationally that allow for hybrid type of programming, which, um, is really just a unique way for charter schools. One of the challenges you have with a small school on a barrier island with a small enrollment is you want to provide a full complement of services, but you recognize that sometimes the amount of students you have have a hard time offsetting that cost. It's been a longstanding challenge with it. Um, that's not unique. There are lots of small schools all around the state, and one of the unique ways that charters can step in and produce that aspect is they can leverage resources within their network. And so you'll have schools that'll have a teacher of record at a school located far, far away that are able to kind of provide some of those pieces at a more, a cost-effective solution so that students and families get a lot of really unique offerings, but the actual staff footprint at the building maybe isn't quite as substantial, uh, as you would look, um, just paying for the headcount. Additionally, from a capital perspective, the charter provides a whole new additional amount of money that potentially can qualify for, for these types of projects. So when new charters come up and even charters that are not new, but have the ability to tap into PICO dollars. So that's public education capital outlay. Our state set aside a substantial amount of money every year to really support, uh, charter schools in this specific way. And charter schools have to qualify for it. So there's several criteria they have to apply for that. In addition to other types of grants and so forth, they can achieve, that can help add a significant additional amount of money into that on an annual basis. Uh, that's just something that a lot of our schools take advantage of. We have them here in Lee County as well, uh, that get, that tap into those PICO dollars. That's money that we as a, as a traditional school district can't tap into, but charter allows for that. And so the reason why we mentioned the insurance aspect is that you, what you've heard already is all, in all likelihood, any amount of money we put into the school, it's going to have to be at the expense of other projects that we have budgeted, other projects that we'll have to delay. And those are any of those capital dollars we have, such as technology for schools. That would require maybe saying we're not going to pay for certain technologies so that we can do more there. It could be new schools that we have planned to build, that we're going to delay in the capital plan or eliminate altogether so that we can prioritize whatever project we do there. It can be maintenance, replacements of roofs, air conditioning, other unexpected storm damage that we may see in future storms. All those things are competing for the same capital dollars. And so anytime you can introduce new revenue to the equation, that gives you potential to help do a more meaningful build or renovation or any of the work that we can do there. So all those things are just some of the many benefits that a charter model provides, uh, because there's still public schools and there's still public school students in our district, uh, that's a part of it. So we just wanted to highlight that. Another piece that we haven't talked about, but is also something worth, um, thinking about that we are, are digging into as well, is some potential benefits of either a P3 or just engaging third parties. And up until this point, we've predominantly looked at it as a municipal arrangement where it's the town of Fort Myers Beach, and then there's an, an organized group, an ad hoc, uh, which was really designed to try to help bring some of those different stakeholder perspectives forward, as well as just the, the town of Fort Myers Beach as well, because they get to hear from many different constituents in their area. But that, we're the only other party in, in that engagement. And as you can see, you know, we're strapped from a capital standpoint across the entire district. We have to make every penny count for all the students, including Fort Myers Beach, including Lehigh, including Cape Coral, Zestero, downtown Fort Myers and so forth. So those are very competitive dollars. So for us, sometimes if you can get a third party, a different partner to the table that can provide some value, that can provide solutions that help us so that we're not maybe having to solely come up. Some, P3s around our state have, we found unique things where they either help with financing when school districts, they simply don't have the finances to do it or the speed at which, uh, because again, one of our challenges, if we were to build a traditional school, we are held fully to SREF standards. Whereas if you have a charter model, that is not, this does not apply. Uh, if a charter builds, they are able to build at a different level of building standard than what we would have to do under SREF. Now, if we were to build it as a district piece, that, that, again, SREF applies to that. Um, with a P3, potentially have other options there. You have other more unique building alternatives that you could do, uh, in that case. Um, so that kind of led, it leads us to the last option, which is really this, um, benefits of third-party engagement in general. Really for us, when you're asked to pick between a rock and a hard place, sometimes the best thing to do is are you really exploring all the alternatives? I think that's one of the things Dr. Carlin and this board have challenged us to do is, okay, we understand some of the non, some of the more traditional options, you know, the rebuilding of the historic building, the filling in the floor, you know, and then those potentially help you for some of the more minor storms. But we know that they don't really help you on a major storm. And so when you know you have, when we can't raise the entire building, which is something we certainly looked at, could we just bring the entire building up? It was very clear from our consultant, that is not a possibility, that that could cause a building to collapse on itself. So now you're looking at other potentially much more expensive options, and that's a lot of additional capital dollars, which would require some substantial investment and deprioritization of other plans. So why would we not at least consider, are there other unique options that would make it, you know, so everyone wins? So the town of Fort Myers Beach is excited, that those families are excited, uh, that we as a community, you know, are, are being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. Is there a way for everyone to win? And in order to do that, we wanted to make sure we're really talking to all the different right people who may be able to help provide insights and ideas and opportunities for us to bring back to you as a board. Uh, that's something that we owe you, and that's something that we have continued to do. That's all the more reason why we've kind of laid out the timetable so far today, which is, we don't, we continue to maintain the site. We are engaging now to get this report done that we can submit to the state. That gives us the full different range of options for any unique options that we may want to consider on that site. And we continue to listen to any, um, offers and ideas of, of different folks that we have. And we are engaging, uh, with one, uh, group right now. We're really digging in to try to look if there's a very creative solution. Uh, we're very excited by some of the preliminary work we've, we've engaged with, with that party. Um, but at this point, you know, we're not ready to kind of talk more specifics on that, except to say, that's a very exciting prospect, uh, something that we'd be very excited to bring about in a future meeting. Um, but right now, we wanted to focus on today, which is getting the school open, getting those students back in school at Heights Elementary, uh, getting an update to you, and then standing ready for any questions and comments you may have as a board. At this time, I'm going to pass it back to Superintendent. If she has any other comments before we turn it back to the vice chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Savage and team. We appreciate the update. And, uh, you know, as I said before, it was very important, uh, to us as a team that you had an opportunity to hear, um, out loud. Sometimes we talk, you know, with our staff behind closed doors. So we want to make sure that we surface not only for you, but for the community, the ongoing conversations we're having. And remember, we're always balancing the care and concern that we have with all of our students. Um, you know, obviously, we've talked about our Fort Myers Beach students joining in with Heights Elementary, and it's a wonderful school. And I know, uh, the two principals have been collaborating, so it's been really exciting to see their work. And I know that, uh, Ms. Neely has been working closely with them. Uh, so we know that our children are well cared for, and they continue to receive their education. So that's, that's primary. And then also, like I said, being good fiscal stewards of the taxpayer dollars. We know that we're all entrusted with those valuable dollars and just really trying to work through some innovative options, uh, so that everybody has some skin in the game and that we've, we've got some opportunities to, uh, to think differently on this solution. So we look forward to any questions that you have, um, and certainly we'll, we'll go back and reference on the slide if there's specific questions you'd like to ask. So I'll turn it over to you for your conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Any questions, comments? Mr. Persons?
You know, I'm, I'm very pro getting a school back out there. I've never made that a secret.
Can't believe it.
I just want to commend you on where you're going here. I think the best idea is to get some kind of a charter in there. I, uh, I know there's a lot of private, well, not really private, they're public charters that are K12s. And to me, it looks like that could be a possibility also, uh, in the future there, because you've got the Bay Oaks there and everything else. Uh, so I just don't want that not to be anywhere, not to be mentioned when you're in negotiations with people. I mean, I would say start off with a K5 and make it where next year, K6, 7, whatever, and grow into it. But I was going to do a charter there, which I'm not. But anyway, that's just, I just wanted to throw that out there. I think it's a great opportunity for the island. Thank you.
Mr. Ribble, did you have?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment, there's been a lot of passion over this. As, as you can imagine, I think everyone's kind of settled down now, really focused on how we're going to operate on the beach moving forward. I think we're, we're all pretty much agreement, we're going to put a structure up there. What that's going to look like, we have a, we have quite a few folks that have come up with some drawings and shared them with the community and the newspaper. And so there's a lot of conversation about what the design of the school should be and how it's going to operate. So I'm looking forward to, uh, to being able to disclose some of the things that we have, uh, been talking about with some folks that, that's confidential. And people say, well, jeez, you know, why can't you disclose it? It's like in negotiations. It's like anything else. When you're negotiating, you have to be patient and you have to trust that we're going to do the right thing. But we're going to have a structure out on that beach, guarantee me that. And it's going to be a school. And at, at the end of the, the day, everyone's pretty, pretty darn happy with, uh, with what's going to be happening out there. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to, to clarify again with Superintendent Carlin and Dr. Savage. So just to, just to confirm with the public, we're still providing educational services to the kids of Fort Myers Beach.
Yes, sir.
That will take place at Heights Elementary, one of our eight schools out there. So we're excited about that.
Okay. Uh, for me personally, I know, uh, Mr. Ribble had talked about putting a structure out there. For me, yeah, if we want a structure out there, I, I don't know if I'm on board with Lee County School District putting a structure out there. If, if there wants to be a charter, that's kind of where I'm, I'm looking at the moment or some innovative opportunity. I'm, I'm telling you that I'm not fully in agreement with putting a Lee County School District specific structure out there. I'm curious to see, you know, perhaps a charter out or some other ones and happy to work through that. I personally would not support any, uh, putting any more dollars into the current structure at the moment, at least individually. So, thank you.
Ms. Saviano?
Uh, thank you, and thank you for the information. And, um, I know I've met with, uh, the Fort Myers Beach Mayor. Uh, I've sat on the ad hoc conversations in the past, so I'm happy to see that there's conversations outside of the box, um, to come with a resolution, you know, for these students. I fully support charter. I came out of a charter, um, from where I taught and where I started. Um, so there is value there, uh, for these kids. So just looking forward to this moving in the right direction and, um, and getting some answers for our families out there as well. So thank you.
Ms. Stephen Helly?
Thank you. So this is exciting news because I know that, um, the community at Fort Myers Beach wants a school. So my, mine was going all different ways. Like, so with, obviously you brought up the SREF piece, because, so if we did a public school, it would have to go follow SREF, which, I mean, the cost of that is, I don't even want to think about that. But, um, I think with charter, the, uh, the ability to create the facility that would best suit the the community, and I was starting to think, like, what about it, you know, being a possible shelter? And if it's raised up, it's, you know, a shelter that's going to be hurricane resistant, as well as possibly even maybe up their emergency center. So a combination of things. And one of my notes was, and I was going to say this earlier, but when it was talking about the, when we talked about some building, everything needs to be metal roofs, from, I mean, because I don't think the hurricanes are going away, unfortunately. So anything that Lee County School District builds, I would recommend metal roofs. But anyways, there's, I think there's endless opportunity here for a partnership and with the community, and I look forward to future conversations for that, for the best interest of Fort Myers Beach. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I'm just always amazed that we bring back charter after three years. I mean, it just keeps coming back. So, thank you, I met with the mayor as well, and it was a very great conversation. But we're here again with the charter. So I just want to make sure that we just, it's another one, we just keep going, you know, forward and forward and forward with this. And if there are, and I'm just curious if we could have this, because this is the first time I've seen this presentation, I appreciate the presentation, it's great, but I've not seen this, so if you could share that, that would be wonderful, so that way, because I have to digest, it's hard for me to look at this and figure it all out at this moment. And then also with the pictures, if there's pictures of any proposed buildings or anything like that, I would also like to see that, and I'm sure other board members would like to see that if they're out there, that we have not seen.
Mr. Persons?
Also, if the superintendent have the staff research and find out how much we're currently getting in school board taxes from the beach, and what's anticipated with the new developments and things like that. And I mean, it's not easy to do, but I know we have a plane, apartments pretty sharp. So I think they could probably figure that out, these new resorts and things, because they'll go on the tax rolls. And I'd like to know, what are they actually giving us, for us to get back?
Happy to do that.
And they'd be nice to put into the conversation.
Absolutely, happy to do that. And we'll also provide some context around that, about, you know, how we share, you know, that it's, how the Florida formula works. Yes, thank you.
Dr. Savage, do you want to add in?
Just in response to Member Jordan's question about the plan, so there was a comment, I think Mr. Ribble may have talked about, you know, plans and so forth. One of the things that, we don't have any actual plans of, you know, here's the project of what we're trying to execute. That's, the reference, I believe, was, we received a, I think a pro bono type of drawing that was done by an architect, or some level of architectural work that was done through Fort Myers, and that was shared with us. So I can't quite recall exactly how we received it, but it just shows, I think, the goodwill that I think a lot of folks are really excited about different ideas, and they're willing to try to chip in and help in a lot of ways. But that is a, it wasn't a specific plan that we have already developed. The work that we're doing with the different folks trying to come up with different alternatives, we're not at a point yet where we have a blueprint or anything along those lines. It's just, that's the reference point. There was something that was circulating in the town of Fort Myers Beach related to, but I'll let Member Ribble clarify if he wants on that.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with what I was talking about, but there was, like I said, there was a lot of passion, and there's a lot of suggestions, and there was a party by the name of Michael D. Stewart, P.E., LLC, that designs buildings and does projects on the beach, and he put the pen to the pencil and to the paper, and this is on the internet, this isn't a secret, it's out there. I'm surprised you folks haven't seen it yet, but been all over Facebook a hundred times, and there's a lot of chatter about it. This particular design would not be compliant with an elementary school because of the number of steps it has at the front. And I know he put a elevator in the middle, if you look at the drawing, but the elevator's not going to be conducive for what we want to do. So, but anyway, it was a thought, it's raised at the right level, I believe. Our mayor's seen this drawing, we talked about it when I had lunch with him a couple of weeks ago. So, a lot of chatter, a lot of conversation. I can give this to, we can send this thing out.
Dr. Carlin?
Yes, and I do want to give credit where credit is due. The mayor did share that information with us. And, you know, we're very purposeful, and when we provide information for you, there are a lot of suggestions that come forward. We try not to share every single thing that we receive relative to this with you. What we try to do is, we try to vet the ideas and see what seems to work, what doesn't. Mr. Ribble, you pointed out a number of situations there where, you know, there were concerns if this was to be a true public school as opposed to a charter or some other partnership. So, you know, I want to be very clear, we're never trying to hide things from you. We do try to properly vet them to make sure that they are ready for prime time. And so those are opportunities we do share within our staff for consideration, for evaluation, to make sure that they would indeed be compliant. So we do receive a lot of information, and we do want to give that out to you when it is a viable option. So just to be clear and to give credit where credit is due. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. I think that was for me. I'm not sure if, if I'm understanding that some members received this and some members did not receive it, is what I'm understanding, because it wasn't vetted, and that's why it wasn't sent out?
Let me clarify, our staff received it. Our staff received it. I received it from the mayor, and then I shared it with our staff, because our staff will vet it, but I did not forward it to any additional board member.
Okay.
Just for point of clarification.
That's why I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, for point of clarification, yes. As we receive things that are appropriate to share, there are a number of things we receive, we will properly vet them through our operations team, we want to look through them, make sure that they are part of the conversation. And then when we come to you, they are ideas that have been properly vetted, and we will make sure all of you are available to that information.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'm very hopeful to the future of what's going to happen at Fort Myers Beach with the families and the students and the families and the children that will continue to be a part of that island. But I'm going to pivot a little bit, because I think we really need to focus on those students right now. I can't add to the construction part right now, that hasn't already been said, but I'm really excited for the students that are attending Heights. They've had enough taken away from them, as is. And I'm just, I'm very hopeful that they're going to have a more traditional setting, that this is going to come out on top when we talk about student achievement. You know, these poor children have been moved from a beach to a homeschool environment, back to San Carlos, which is very far from the beach, and then to Heights. So I know, I'm very confident that two administrators that are going to be working together to make sure that those children have an amazing year, and I commend the staff that is going to be working behind the scenes to help those. So thank you, Ms. Neely, I know you're a big part of that. Obviously, Heights is a little bit near and dear to my heart, being a former employee there, and it's a great school, and I'm very confident that those children are going to have a great year. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, have a great afternoon. We're going to pivot back to, I believe we are ready, okay. So before we had a recess, we were in discussions with the school board attorney and general counsel contract. I believe conversations were had. So we are going to invite Mr. Quick back to the dais with us to have these, to conclude this conversation. Dr. Carlin?
Yes, before we continue, I do want to reference, there was a question asked of my staff and myself prior to the recess. There were questions relative to the difference in the salaries, in the salary, so the proposed salary would be $212,000, the current salary is $194,670. The difference would be $26,669, including salary, retirement, and social security. Then on top of that, if there was a severance package of 20 weeks, that would be the additional $118,000, for a total fiscal impact of $144,669. So I just want to make sure we got back with the board regarding that information. Thank you, I have also emailed it to you.
Thank you.
Hi. So I was able to speak with Kathy for a while, while you all were talking. Also, I was able to speak with Dr. Savage, just to try to bounce some ideas, since actually Dr. Carlin was busy in here, to try to bounce some ideas about the language and the legal structure, just to make sure I had an understanding from the superintendent's perspective as well. So there are a couple of outstanding issues that still remain. The biggest is with regard to the 20 weeks severance. Kathy indicated that if she is giving up the super majority, that she would insist on having the 20, a flat 20-week severance in there. So just 20 weeks, not the language about potentially reducing it if there's a, if she obtains gainful employment. So I would just say, the demand is just 20-week severance, if she's terminated without cause. The other, there's a couple other issues in terms of, with regard to the outside professional activities, she asked if the teaching could be, would be, could be added back in, she would like to have that in there. Again, she stressed with me that that's on her off time, it's not during her district time, it's so would be weekends or vacation time or something like that. She had asked to add that back in. There was also a request in terms of the end date. So the end date of this, she indicated that would be, it would be June 30th, 2027. I think that, as I understand it, that aligns up with some other end dates of yours, so it's actually, would be actually 23 months, I guess, if we made the effective date now. Yeah, 20, so a little less than two years. So the effective date, she said to line it up with everything else would be June 30, not the effective date, the end date, it would run until June 30th, 2027. She asked that if the board, to include language in the contract, that if the board, as to whether or not the board intends to either try to renegotiate to keep her on, basically whether the board intends to try to keep her on beyond the contract, or intends to move forward. It was a request from her, that way, if the board intends to move on, she can start looking for new employment. My recommendation to the board is, if you're open to that, to make it mutual, that way, if she intends not to continue on, that you all know, so you can also start your process too. I think that's a fair thing, if you're going to have it, that it be mutual, so that both sides have the ability to move forward if they'd like to. I did draft some language in terms of the potential structure that we're talking about with regard to the chief staff, recognizing the chief staff attorney. Again, I can read it, just so you have it, what I had drafted, and it's a kind of rough draft, is Mr. Puig Bruno will serve as the attorney for number one, the board, and number two, the district. And then I pulled from the policy, it says, "The school board attorney shall also serve as the general counsel for the district." Then it will continue on something along the lines that the board has approved the superintendent to retain a chief staff attorney, who will be available to advise the superintendent on matters related to the superintendent's official responsibilities. Trying to see if I can carve that out, I think that that should hopefully be agreeable. Kathy was agreeable to that language, so, you know, hopefully that's something agreeable. I think that that, because you don't have a policy on the chief staff attorney, so I was, I didn't have language I could lift from that, but I think that that properly categorizes it, at least as I understand it, from the discussions with all of you, as well as the discussions with staff. So the big issue, I guess, for you all is, are you willing to either keep the super majority and then go with the up to 20-week severance language? Or are you willing to give her the just flat 20 weeks, but keep reducing it down to the majority? I think that is, seems to be the biggest tipping point, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Persons?
I just have a couple of questions, I think the public might want to know. If the contract is not renewed, then there would not be any severance, am I correct?
That's correct, it's a non-renewal. So you're not terminating for, without cause, it's just the contract's running its course.
And in your experience, when someone, it doesn't renew, do they normally have another job? I mean, when someone is let go for no cause, they usually don't have another job lined up, so it would take a while to get that. I'm just, they could possibly, I mean, obviously, anything's possible, they could have a job the next day. But most likely, it's going to be a few months, and this is like basically a five-month severance. So I don't know, up to, I don't know what the difference would be, there's no way to know for sure, but in my opinion, it's not going to be that much. It'd probably be like it was in Bernier's case, was it four weeks? You know, by the time he had an interview and got another position, so it didn't really save us a whole lot of money. So I could, I'm fine with the super majority and 20 weeks, or sort of fine with 20, up to 20 weeks, or I'm fine with set 20 weeks and the regular majority. I can go either way, whether the board wants to do the majority, so, because I don't see a whole lot of difference there.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. For me, on the super majority and the total pad of 20 weeks, I would be a hard no on both.
Board, any other comments?
Well, I agree with Armor, I'd go along with it, same as Armor.
Ms. Jordan?
I would as well. Go with Mr. Persons, super majority and up to 20.
Yeah, I said I could go along with either, but I prefer the super majority and up to 20.
Okay, so keep the super majority, but then have the language be what was proposed, which is the up to 20?
Yes.
Ms. Giovanni?
So, this is, I thought we, just, help me remember, I thought we got away with the super majority on our voting. Am I wrong? Super majority, like?
Policy.
Policy, right.
Up to 20 weeks was a debate.
But I just, I'm thinking about that, I just need help on that piece.
Mr. Quick, did you want to comment on that?
No, I thought she was asking me, but I realized she was talking about a broader policy.
Mr. Fisher?
Chair, through you, if you don't mind, if I can clarify that, we originally had policy in order to amend or remove policy required a super majority, now it's a simple majority. That's separate that.
Ms. Jordan?
And that was done because of a way a vote went, and then we decided to do that. So that's what happened with that, that's when that came out to be, because we always did have the super majority, and then we came up with that, that policy.
Mr. Fisher?
Just to clarify, the purpose of changing that was to align with other legislative bodies, including the state of Florida.
So this would be the only thing that we would have to have a super majority on, it would be to terminate the superintendent then, I mean, the board attorney. Am I correct then? Is what, that's what we're agreeing to?
That's, yeah, so I'm not aware of whether you have any other agreements that require a super majority. If you do not, then yes, this would be, and again, she's saying, she's okay with the majority, but then she wants the flat 20 weeks. So she, it's, there's, I guess, if we're going to have an agreement with, a new agreement with Mr. Puig Bruno, then those are kind of the two options that she's presented, super majority, and then she's okay with up to 20 weeks, or regular majority, but then the flat 20 weeks. So that if we're in the buffet line, those are our two options. Or the other option is, continue under the agreement that we have.
So I don't like going against a policy that we put in place regarding the super majority. So in order to put this to bed, I would rather forego the super majority and give her her 20 weeks, and I guess is my option if I'm going to through the buffet line.
You're hungry like me.
So, I am not willing to give up the super majority. I would prefer it to be majority vote, but perhaps we could negotiate the 20 weeks to 16, and I'd rather five months than four months. I mean, and I don't know how much money that's going to save the district. I mean, if
I, I mean, if it's a hard, you know, not up to, but wants a definitive amount of time. I've just, the reason I say that is I've, I have, I've seen this happen before in the corporate world, where quite frankly, somebody gets 20 weeks and they wait till the, I mean, I understand this is a flat 20. She could have a job, and I'm, this is not anything against our attorney. This is any, anybody that works in this realm, they could have a job lined up, knowing that something was coming down the pipe, and leaves the district Friday and starts working on Monday. And now they've, now they've taken 20 weeks of pay and getting paid at their new job at the same time. So, I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding, but that's what we would be, that's what we would be giving. Mr. Persons?
She doesn't leave her job on a Friday. We say, "Get out of here for no reason." That's, that's a big difference to me. I mean, I just want to make sure it's not like, yeah, I'm just going to resign on Friday and go take my 20 weeks. I mean, we're, if she's released for no cause, you know, if there's a cause, then, you know, we, it's set 20 weeks, and we can come up with four votes.
Not resignation, it's.
And then she's gone, and she gets 20 weeks, or if there's, I mean, if there's, if there is a cause, all we need is four votes and.
I would, if I had to pick, I'm, I would rather get rid of the supermajority if I have to choose between the two. Ms. Jordan?
It's termination, and it's up, it's 20 weeks. It's not that you get 20 weeks to go take a vacation. It's, you have 20 weeks to figure out what you're doing, because just like.
No, that's not.
Well, the proposal, if it goes to, down to a majority, she's saying she wants a straight 20 weeks. If you keep the supermajority, then she's willing to agree to the up to 20 weeks, where if she gets a job after a month, then she wouldn't get any more payment after that.
What? I'm sorry.
I need to let her finish.
Can you just, yeah, just please clear, make me understand this. So, if I, I am terminated today, okay, get out. So, if I find a job tomorrow, I still getting 20 weeks severance, which does not stop?
Depending on the language of the agreement, yes. So, there's two ways to write it. One is, if you're terminated without cause, you get 20 week severance. That means the district writes, writes a check for 20 weeks, you get it. The other way is to write it, you get 20 weeks, and, but then with a, if she has, obtains gainful employment, then it's reduced by the amount of time that she was employed.
That's, that's the buffet I want, right there.
Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, I think, I think we're missing a point here. The key word in this agreement is termination. It's not resignation. We're saying if we terminate her, we tell her, "Don't come in anymore. We decided to go another direction." That's terminating her. If she resigns, that's a whole different deal. Then she doesn't get 20 weeks.
Correct. There's, if she's terminated with cause, if she resigns, or if the contract runs its course and is not renewed, there's no severance. The severance comes into play only if she's terminated without cause.
Mr. Fisher?
My objection to that with paying out, you know, the 20 weeks, I've talked about the supermajority before, for me, is, is just looking at it, is my individual governmental philosophy, where we're different than a private business. We serve at the pleasure of the public. The employees serve at the pleasure of the superintendent, and the board attorney and the board auditors serve at the pleasure of us. And that's how I look at it from governmental philosophy. So, I mean, it's, we can't compare private business with that. Again, that has nothing to do with the performance of our board attorney. I've said that. You know, that's how I look as a philosophy. So, the thing with the supermajority is the same thing. The only employee in this district that would, to get rid of, would have a supermajority. In the past, we had an obvious superintendent. I mean, there's nothing saying we couldn't negotiate up to 20 weeks as we did before. I know she doesn't want that. I'm just saying from a philosophical standpoint.
So, as I understand it now, I've heard from six of you, three have said that you would want to keep the supermajority and go with the up to 20 weeks language. Ms. Giavonelli, you said that you wanted to, you were good with the majority, and then going with the 20 weeks. Ms. Langford Fleming, you said the majority, and then, I wasn't clear if you were okay with the 20 weeks, but you also, you mentioned 16, maybe, maybe a reduced number. Mr. Fisher was, you wanted to keep the majority and keep the up to 20 weeks language. So, Ms. Chaviano, that I just needed to hear from you as to, if you had a position on that, to see if there, if this is a deal breaker or not.
No, yeah, so I'm not supportive of the supermajority, and it goes against our policy. And in terms of the 20 weeks, I'm almost inclined, similar to Fleming, if it's something where we reduce it, that's fine, and the employment kind of thing.
This is going to take some, this, this issue obviously is going to take some more time. I mean, we don't have, I mean, I'll have to speak with Kathy to see, I mean, her conviction was, was strong when she talked to me and said, "This is what I need." So, I'll need to speak with her some more. I know, are we at the end of your agenda now, or?
Yeah.
I just want to let Mr. Persons give his comment, and then.
I just have two points to bring up. Number one, it is in the statutes, up to 20 weeks. It's not like we're just pulling something out of thin air. I mean, this is, and it's quite commonly done in the private sector, where they work at the pleasure of their board. You know, attorneys that go for no cause are often getting 20 weeks. That's not unreasonable whatsoever in this world. I'm just, the way I could, the way I see it, I don't have a problem with 20 weeks. So, supermajority, I can live without that, but I think it should be a guaranteed 20 weeks, if we're just doing a simple majority. You know, it's just, I see boards all over the state, all the cities and everything, and all of a sudden, you just get four people, get mad at you for one week, and you're gone. I mean, it's that simple, you know, in a board this size. I've seen it with superintendents. I've seen it with, I don't really follow attorneys that much, but I'm sure it happens there too. So, I, I see that where she would want a supermajority, because that would be harder, and I understand that. But to have a supermajority and then almost get nothing, I mean, I mean, obviously, you're going to try to get a job, but you've done nothing wrong. I mean, if you're being released for without cause, then, you know, it's, we have, I think, a duty to sort of make it right as best we can. And within the statutes, I think 20 weeks is not bad, if we're just going to do a simple majority. So, I hope we'll eventually end up coming down with a simple majority and 20 weeks, and just move on. I mean, this, we shouldn't just keep going on, on this.
Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, they also, the 20 weeks gives you a good sense to get a hold harmless. You get the employee to sign off, so you don't have to worry about any type of repercussion down the road. So, it's, it's a cost of doing business.
May I ask a, just a clarifying question also? When, I think I already know the answer, but if she is receiving, he or she, whoever's in that role, is receiving 20 weeks, they don't work with, for us anymore, or getting 20 weeks of pay regardless, do they also continue to get benefits?
Let me check. I believe it's, let me check. I don't want to misspeak. Because you can do it either way, so I want to make sure I know how you have, although receiving benefits is, let me just.
Good question.
While he's looking that up, I, let's have a discussion, if you don't mind. I know this is on tonight's agenda. I'm not sure that we're going to come to an agreement today or be able to vote on this tonight, because I think it's fair for our attorney to have this conversation post with Mr. Quick, and us being at the end of our workshop. So, what are the thoughts about pulling this item off of tonight's agenda? Just before we continue to maul this around, are there any? Mr. Fisher?
If it continues down this path, I was going to pull the item, no matter what.
Okay. Ms. Giavonelli, do you have any thoughts there?
I would like to hear what the public has to say. And I think even this evening, what the public would have to say, because I'm sure they're, they're watching. So, I mean, I honestly, I hate pulling the item, because I feel that we need to, I think we're, I think we're almost there. I think we're almost there.
Okay.
I guess if we pull the item, I'd love to hear the public has to say, and I'm hoping that we can get it back on for tonight, but, and if we pulled the item, then, then we deal with it. If we can get there, I'd like to get there, so, honestly.
Sorry, I didn't mean to call you out. I was kind of just going to see what the temperature of the board is.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Fisher?
I just clarified. My apologies to Member Giavonelli as well. If it's going to be on the agenda tonight, I would like to pull for discussion. So, if this, I want to put the notice now that if this continues, I want that formally pulled for discussion tonight. Item F2.
Mr. Ribble, what are your feelings about?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to see how this plays out. If we have to pull it later on, this evening, that's fine, but let's pull, let's see how it plays out. We're pretty close.
Any other board members want to comment there, just so we? Mr. Persons?
Well, it seems like the majority wants a simple majority, as far as doing it. And it seems, from my count, three of the board would like a set 20 weeks, and two members of the board wanted like 16 weeks or something along there. I mean, we're so close. Hopefully, you know, I, again, I think the way it works, I don't see a big difference, so hopefully someone on the board might change their mind.
Okay, so leaving it on the agenda is okay with you tonight?
Yeah, I mean, we'll pull it for discussion, because it has to be, Attorney Quick has to go back and talk to the attorney, so.
Right.
Ms. Chaviano?
Discussion, maybe we can find out where we're at.
Ms. Chaviano?
No, I'm in agreement. I mean, we're here because of my push for last week to get this done. So, again, I believe we're close. I understand the up to 20 weeks. It wasn't on the original contract this was placed in, and the agreements after the fact. I believe we can get there, so if we can put it to bed and come to an agreement tonight, I'd rather do that than stop kicking the can, because there are other things to focus on. So, yes, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Quick?
Just to answer your question from before, it's base salary. So, I would not, in the contract, you have a separation, you have compensation where defined salary, and then you have retirement and benefits. So, I would interpret this to just be her salary. So, it would be that the, if we're talking about increase, right now, it would be the 212,000, and then obviously, there might, could be incremental, there could be increases in the future as to when it comes into play.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the superintendent, I just want to confirm that I will be pulling to your staff item F2 on the agenda tonight for discussion.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Just a point, would you all like me to stay for the, the board meeting for the, for the discussion tonight? I'm available too, but I anticipate that could be an issue.
Yes, please. Yes, please. Okay. Thank you. So, I will give you a few minutes to swap chairs, because we now need to go into public comment, which our attorney needs to read.
Madam Chair, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please provide it to the staff. Public comment will be held at the podium in the center aisle in front. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Abusive language, defined as swearing, use of profanity, or name-calling, is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1, and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Also, per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes, if there are 20 speakers or less. You will find a countdown on the big screens in front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. Madam Chair, there are currently one speaker signed up that will address the board at this briefing, and I will call that person once.
I think we have a few more that would like to speak. If you'll raise your hand, we will bring a comment card over to you. Thank you. Our first speaker can approach.
Yes, I thought, Marge Cox will please come forward.
Hi, I'm Marge Cox, 11 Benita Springs. I'm a retired educator, and I'm here because it's the beginning of the school year, and I'm so excited. And, and I hope that you do important work here. I appreciate that. But let us remember that what we're really all about is our kids, our students, their families, their success for this school year. I sent you an email earlier today, and I have left a paper copy for you as well, yes, about the importance of reading aloud, because that makes a difference for students of all ages. It is not just something for students who can't read. I can still remember what my high school English class felt like when the teacher read to us. And so, I've given you five pieces of research that, that reflect the importance of reading aloud, both for the parents who could do it, and the teachers as well, and then some proposed actions, because I don't think the research makes any difference if you don't see ways for it to make a difference for our kids. So, the first one is for principals to set an expectation for teachers to read aloud in class consistently, because your principals are your building leaders. If they believe in it, the teachers will believe in it. And research shows it is important for kids. So, just as a reminder to the principals that reading aloud is appropriate for students of all ages, it makes a difference for them. To include read aloud strategies for parents at back-to-school nights or other parent meetings. Some parents were never read to as kids, and so they aren't quite sure how do they do that with their child. And so, how come, helping them to know how to read effectively aloud can be a strategy that we can help them to develop. Providing parents with book titles, so that they've got ideas of what to do, and, and what to do with. We have wonderful bookstores. We have a wonderful Lee County Public Library system, including audiobooks in our school libraries, because there are some parents who can't read. I wish that weren't so, but the bottom line is, it is so. And so, how do we help that next generation of their students to be able to read? They need to hear it. And so, audiobooks provide them with a hearing of it. Kids aren't going to read things that they haven't heard ahead of time. And then to connect with the Lee County Public Library system, we do have a wonderful public library system, and helping them to see ways to make connections in with our students and our programming will make a difference for students of all ages. So, as you're thinking about all the deep topics that you think about as a school board, please think too about the joy of reading, and excitement of reading aloud, and how it is when that child hears those words come alive that may just look like black marks on the page. So, I just.
Thank you, Ms. Cox.
Our additional speakers are John Cox and Dan Allers. Again, please provide your name at the podium.
Hi, my name is John Cox. I think it important for us to remember where we were a couple of years ago. A couple of years ago, under a previous regime, we were about to get approved for $5.9 million for a temporary campus. It was elevated, and us as a community saw a risk in doing that. We didn't want a temporary campus. We wanted something permanent, because we know how important a school is to our community. So, we came to you guys and said, "Well, instead of doing that, can we forego the portables? We'll send our kids off the island for as long as it takes, but we can take that $5.9 billion, $5.9 million and invest it in something brick and mortar that's elevated." And that's the agreement that we made, and that was the agreement that was approved. Now, I understand storms have happened, things have changed, it's changed for us on the island. Now, I understand storms have happened, things have changed, it's changed for us on the island too, what we deal with down there, but that original agreement just kind of has fallen to the wayside. We had an ILA, we had an agreement. None of it's being adhered to. I appreciate the comments to, about Heights. There is zero excitement when our island, about our kids going to Heights. Zero. We have lost almost 50% enrollment in the last year, because it's been a year. It's been a year, and we're still talking about like, maybe we can do this, maybe we can do that. It's concerning, and I just want to be frank, I think you guys all know that my heart is in this, I've been fighting for this school from the beginning. We have 39 kids. My two kids will not be attending Heights next year. I cannot in good conscience put my kindergartner on a bus for sometimes one to two hours a day, one way. I know this is a tough nut to crack. I know it's a real tough nut to crack, but it's been a year. If, if, if we think that we're going to leverage contractors to come onboard, maybe, maybe something could be reached, but they're all going to have a price. I don't know that that price will sell through our town. We need to have a little more urgency for this, and we, we really need to find a way to get around this. We've worked with you guys, I think we've been good stewards, we've tried to find solutions, but we just need to have some more urgency to get through this. And if it is a third party, or if it is something, but there's a lot of obstacles to overcome in that, and we need to have our kids back in school on our island. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or evening, whatever. Dan Allers, Mayor, town of Fort Myers Beach. First, thank you, Madam Chair and board members, one, for allowing me to speak today, and two, for taking the time out of your busy schedules to meet with me. I've had the opportunity to meet with most of you, if not almost all of you. Superintendent Carlin, thank you for you and your staff meeting with, with our staff to try to, to find a resolution. I think I can point to a few things to answer some of your questions. Member Persons, I have that, those numbers specifically for you, because that's a question that I had. And these numbers are based from June of 2024 through May of 2025, and they're broken down by month, I'll be happy to share it with you if you want. But that number over the last year is $29,367,149 specifically from the town of Fort Myers Beach. And we all know we're not even close to being built back yet. You know, a lot of the conversation has been around enrollment, I think John kind of covered that. As things get drawn on, that enrollment is going to go down, because as you well know, some of our kids waited for a bus that never came. And this is after they've lost their homes. And I don't want to go back down that road, but I think that has to put some context into some, some of these numbers we're talking about. Sitting on that side of the dais, I completely understand what it means to be fiscally responsible. Totally understand that, totally get it. I think you've had some good conversations here, I think you'll have some good conversations going forward. In our meetings, I think I've provided you with some information that meets all the criteria that you talked about, fiscal responsibility. You know, for me, looking back at it, and I told you, I have a, a daughter that I've had to go through this with for 23 years now. And it's, it's sad to me to see that sometimes we have to put fiscal responsibility over our children first. As parents, anyone that's a parent knows that your number one job is to take care of our kids. And yet, we're, when we're sitting on that side of the dais, we have to look at fiscal responsibility. It's just part of the job, we get it. In our meetings, I won't go into detail, oh, I want to point a little clarity on the, the school that you guys are talking about, the renderings. I did that purposely just for, one, that knowing what it could potentially cost to build a school there, and without having some sort of drawing, it's hard to put per-square-foot numbers to things until you kind of, so that rendering was just basically what's essentially there, elevated. Obviously, it's not what we're proposing, it's not, it was nothing more than to just get hard costs of what it would cost to build a building on that site. But I think there's a path, as I've shared with all of you, to go forward, that meets all the criteria, fiscal responsibility. It allows us to answer to our constituents. It, it allows us to get the kids back in school very fast, and it allows us to never have to do this again. I saw the excitement in Dr. Fisher's face when talking about a, a potential another partner. As we all know, the more partners you have, we know how long it took to get to the agreement we have in place now. You add another partner, it's going to be very, very difficult. I'm just going to put it out there, it's going to be very difficult to, to achieve. Thank you, Member Fleming, for making it about the kids, because that's what we're all here for. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Allers.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to good to the order, other business. I will start with Ms. Chaviano.
I'm going to reserve by time for tonight, so we're good, thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Same, I'll reserve till the night.
Ms. Jordan?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Ribble?
Sorry.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Ditto.
Mr. Fisher?
Sorry.
I know I've talked a lot during this meeting, just a couple of real clarifications. Thank you, obviously, for Mayor Allers and John, I think you meant Dr. Savage, Dr. Fisher's my wife, so.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, so, but, but one thing I just wanted to clarify, I was thinking about, so for the, which I should have brought up during the discussion, it slipped my mind, for board attorney tonight, we don't have any backup material to show the public. I don't know if there's a way we can put up a, a draft or something, and at least put the fiscal impact up. That was a little bit of my concern last time, making sure we had something to show the public before a voting meeting tonight, so I don't, I mean, obviously, that'd be up to the direction of our board right now, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Are you all, first of all, is it even a possibility? Dr. Carlin, do you know if staff could put that up during the meeting on our?
Yeah, I, I would defer, obviously, to our attorney at what point. I don't want to, don't want to push him, but I, but I do, his action would determine our action.
But I, right, but it is possible on our end, but is it possible?
We can display anything up, up there, I believe, but I, again, I'll defer to him.
I can, I can sit down when we break and go through and work on the points of agreement that we have here, and then I'll look at the best way that I, hopefully, to present the two options as to what the, the, I guess, the two outstanding options are for, that we're still talking about here.
Thank you.
So yes, I will work as quickly as I can.
Well, we will try to adjourn as quickly as we can, so you can do that. Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Fisher?
I'm done.
Okay. I am just very grateful that staff pulled off the welcome to new teachers I was pulling in the parking lot, and a lot of excitement, you could see conversation bubbling in the parking lot, so hopefully, those were all positive conversations. I'm going to, I'm going to guess that they were, because they were all smiling. So thank you for providing lunch for those new teachers, I think that's, I think that's great. Mr. Attorney Huffman, do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you, Madam Chair.
Superintendent Carlin?
And I will share my comments this evening, thank you very much.
Excellent. Today, we have our school board meeting, our action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 4:34 PM.